...meeting for November 8th, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Lekker the records show that all councilors are present, as well as City Administrator Kenrath. Mayor Doyle has been excused from tonight’s meeting, and per the City Charter, Article 2, Section 205(c), will be facilitated by the Deputy Mayor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
With the absence of Mayor Doyle tonight, the reading of the Mayor’s proclamation Recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month will be moved to November 22nd. With that, Item 5, are there any committee correspondents to counsel? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I have read a letter here from Kirk Mahoney, who is the State Historic Preservation Officer. Dear Councilors, and of course, the Mayor and the City Administrator, and citizens of Saco. At a meeting of the Maine Historic Preservation Commission held on October 22nd, 2021, the Rendezvous Point Burying Ground in Saco, Maine was approved for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. The nomination will be sent to the Chief of Registration in Washington DC for consideration. You will be notified of the final decision when it is received. Sincerely, Kirk Mahoney. And as liaison to the HPC, I want to thank every member of HPC, past and present, for their work in getting the Rendezvous Point Burying Ground designation to this point, considering that it is an invaluable part of Saco’s heritage, going back to possibly the early part of the 17th century, if not before. Having this being part of the registration will be something all residents of Saco can be proud of, because it puts it on the map historically, and it’s a wonderful thing.
Yes, it is. Thank you. I know that last year, I was honored to go down there when we had the surveyors come doing the GPS system, the grounding, to find out the, to see how many graves we had, and it was really interesting to see, and I know that HPC has worked hard on getting this completed. So congratulations. Any other counsel comments? Committee comments? Okay, not seeing any. We will now move on to public comment. We have one signed up, and that is Daniel Alua. Please step forward to the podium, state your name, address, and please keep your comment to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. I’m Daniel Vila. I live at 172 Highland Avenue in Gardner, and I’m here on behalf of Founding Farmers LLC. As you know, we’ve been trying to establish some business within the city of Saco, helping to promote economic development and whatnot. However, tonight, you’re going to vote on some amendments to your marijuana moratorium that prohibits the operation of medical marijuana establishments. Additionally, one of the other limitations and conditions that you’ll be voting on indicates that all sales will be conducted electronically and via credit, debit, or similar electronic payment methods. Cash is prohibited. That’s a problem, because banks operate on a federal level, which marijuana is illegal on a federal level, and so cash is the only method of acceptance for these institutions. Additionally, the store hours that are being proposed refute weekends, which eliminates availability on a medical level for patients such as myself, and those of us who work 9 to 5, 8 to 5. So I ask that you please reconsider what you’re about to vote on, and consider those of us who actually have medical purposes for this, such as myself. These proposals are absolutely unfriendly, not only to business people such as myself, but especially to patients. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate the time you all have dedicated to this topic.
Thank you very much. We have no one else signed up, so any members of the public wishing to speak to the counsel, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and remember to keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, not seeing any members asking to be recognized. That brings us now to Item 7, approval of the minutes. There are no minutes to approve. Item 8, consent items. We have three items tonight. Counsel schedule, cancel November 15th meeting. B, application for a license to operate Beano Bingo at the Bitterford and Saco Lodge of Elks, number 1597. And C, application for a license to operate Games of Chance, Bitterford and Saco Lodge of Elks, 1597. Is there a motion to approve the consented items?
So moved. Second?
Motion approved by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Vernon?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, consent items passed, 6-0. Okay, now we move on to Number 9, action items. At this time, we do have a joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss legal training on contract zones. Would like to invite members of the Planning Board forward, and Attorney Natalie Burns.
I would. Let me just make sure that everyone can hear me fine. I’m sure the counsel can. Okay. My name is Natalie Burns. I’m an attorney at Jensen Baird, and I occasionally advise the city on various matters, usually having to do with land use, and particularly having to do with contract zones. I’m going to do a very brief presentation on the legal authority, both state statute and Saco city ordinance, as to the requirements for a conditional and contract zone, and talk a little bit about some cases that answer some questions that come up quite often. So, to start out, the state statute that authorizes conditional and contract zoning is entitled, is in Title 30A, and it’s Section 4352, specifically subsection 8. 4352 is generally the statute that deals with all types of zoning, but subsection 8 is specifically conditional and contract zoning. In order to have conditional or contract rezoning, a municipality is required to adopt an ordinance, which of course, Saco has done, and there are definitions for each of the terms, conditional and contract zoning. These are found in Title 30A, Section 4301, which is the general definition section for land use statutes. A conditional zoning is the process by which the municipal legislative body may rezone the property to permit the use of that property, subject to conditions not generally applicable to other properties similarly zoned. And the definition of contract zone in the statute is “the process by which the property owner, in consideration of the rezoning of the person’s property, agrees to the imposition of certain conditions or restrictions not imposed on similarly zoned properties.” And we’ll talk a little bit more as we go on about what the distinction is in practice as to those two things. Legally, there’s not a lot of difference, but there are some differences in how they end up looking. So in order to adopt either a conditional zoning or a contract zoning under state law, the Planning Board has to first hold a public hearing on the proposed conditions. There are special notice requirements beyond what usually is given for rezoning. It has to be posted in City Hall 13 days before the hearing, published in a newspaper at least two times, with the first publication at least seven days before a hearing. Notice has to be sent to owners of the property to be rezoned, and to abutting property owners. Also, if the property is in a source water protection area, then a public drinking water supplier also has to receive notice of the rezoning. The notice has to contain a map of the property to be rezoned, and it also has to include a list of the proposed conditions and restrictions that are part of the rezoning. Under the statute, there are three requirements for either conditional or contract rezoning. One is something that applies to any rezoning that the city does. It has to be consistent with the city’s comprehensive plan. The second one is that it has to establish rezoned areas that are consistent with the existing and permitted uses within the original zones. And the final one is that it can only include conditions and restrictions that relate to the physical development or operation of the property. Of course, the city has adopted an ordinance. It’s Section 17 of the zoning ordinance, and it refers to the term as “contract zoning,” but it’s very clear that that applies to either one. So despite the fact that it’s called contract zoning, it is defined to include both contract and conditional zoning. There are some additional requirements, or slightly different requirements, under the city’s ordinance, beyond those that are set forth in the statute. First of all, it states that any request for a contract zone has to be made by the owner of the property, or by some other person who has right, title, or interest, such as a purchase and sale agreement, or a lease. The contract zoning is allowed in all zoning districts, except for Resource Protection, although there is a provision that talks about notice within the Resource Protection District, but because that specific provision says no in Resource Protection, you can’t do it in that zoning district. The notice requirement, the posting has to be done a day earlier under your ordinance. It’s 14 days instead of 13. The mailed notice has to go to property owners in residential, industrial, and it says Resource Protection Districts, if they’re within 600 feet of the subject property, not just abutters. If a property owner, if a property is in the HDR, a business or mixed-use district, notice is required to anybody within 200 feet, again, not just abutters. And the ordinance has a provision that’s quite standard in zoning ordinances, that says that the failure of a property owner to receive a notice does not mean that a new hearing has to be held, or an action of the Planning Board or City Council has to be invalidated. The notice has to be sent, but the city, of course, doesn’t have any control over whether that notice is in fact received. And of course, under the law, even though this is not stated, the notice is sent to the property owner as of April 1st, so the one that’s listed in the assessing records. So if the property has changed hands since then, and someone comes in and says, “Well, I didn’t get a notice for it,” then the required notice goes to the property owner in the assessing records. Also, under your ordinance, there are some provisions that do not exist under state law. One is that the Planning Board has to develop findings as to four criteria, and they will sound familiar, because some of them come from state law. The first is that the Planning Board has to find that the rezoning is for land with an unusual nature or location. Now, that is a Saco requirement. That is not a state law requirement. The second standard is that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is required for any rezoning under state law, so that’s consistent with the statute. The third one is that the rezoning is consistent with, but not limited to, the existing uses and permitted uses within the original zone. Again, I mentioned that when I talked about the statute. And the final one is that the conditions proposed are sufficient to meet the intent of this section. I’m not quite sure exactly what that means, but it is a required finding. So when this, as you know, it goes first to the Planning Board. The Planning Board votes, makes its recommendation to you, could be positive, could be negative, has to have the findings on those four standards. Then it comes to the City Council. And the City Council is also required, under the ordinance, to adopt findings on those four standards. And the ordinance is clear that if you agree with the Planning Board, you can simply adopt the findings of the Planning Board, but obviously, if you disagree, you have to make your own So now I’m going to talk a little bit about what happens, what the courts have said various things mean. How can a contract zone or a conditional zone be challenged in the courts? What happens? And what do some of these standards mean? So, the, there is a case from 1987 that is not a conditional or contract rezoning case, called La Bonta versus City of Waterville. But we always talk about that case, because it’s one of the first cases in which a rezoning was challenged, and it is cited in all of the subsequent cases, including for conditional and contract rezoning. So the procedure for it is not what you would think of. Normally, when you have a Planning Board decision, or even a lot of City Council decisions, they are appealed to the court through what’s called the Rule-ADB process, and that’s the main rule of civil procedure that governs the procedures for these challenges. That’s not the process that applies here. The process that applies is that someone who wishes to challenge a rezoning has to do it through a declaratory judgment action. Now, that’s a distinction to attorneys, but because of what has happened since then, and later court decisions, it ends up being a very similar process, because the court is only going to review the process before the Planning Board and the process before the City Council. The reason for that is that rezoning is not what’s referred to as a quasi-judicial action, which is usually what the Planning Board is doing when it’s reviewing a site plan, or a subdivision, or a conditional use application. It is applying standards set forth in the ordinance, and if those standards are met, then it has to approve the application. If they’re not, it denies it. Instead, rezoning, including conditional and contract rezoning, is a legislative matter. And of course, that’s usually what the City Council is doing, is legislative matters, with the exception of liquor licenses, and any other licenses that you may hear that you do here in a quasi-judicial capacity. So because it is a legislative action, a court review of any rezoning, including conditional and contract zoning, is generally done quite deferentially. And there’s a case from 1996, Vella versus Town of Camden, and that case I like to talk about, because in that case, one of the challenges was that this was a rezoning, it was not a conditional or contract rezoning, but it, the, one of the challenges was that it was a spot zone. And that’s something that you hear quite often, particularly when you’re talking about a contract zone, is that it’s a spot zone, and it’s therefore illegal. It is a spot zone, but under Maine law, spot zones are not in and of themselves illegal. The question is whether a rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, not whether it only benefits one property. So under Maine law, you can do a rezoning, whether it’s a text, just a general text change, or just a general map change, as long as it’s consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that’s why we talk about the Vella case, because it makes it clear that spot zoning in Maine is not illegal in and of itself, but it can be illegal if it doesn’t meet the requirements of the statute. The, any challenge to a rezoning, particularly a contractor conditional rezoning, has to be based upon those, the statutory standards that we talked about, and of course, because you have another standard, that also could be challenged. So there are cases that talk about what consistency with the comprehensive plan means. Again, going back to the La Bonta case, which is usually cited for this. The test is whether, and I’m going to more or less quote this, whether from the evidence before it, the legislative body could have determined that the rezoning was, quote, “in basic harmony with the comprehensive plan.” And I’m going to talk in a minute about a case that talks about what “in basic harmony” means. And that case is Remmel versus City of Portland, a case from 2014, where the law court said “a rezoning is in basic harmony if it strikes a reasonable balance among the municipality’s various goals and its comprehensive plan, or overlaps considerably with the comprehensive plan.” If the plan, if a proposed rezoning plan is consistent with some provisions of the comprehensive plan, it can still be, it can still be found to be in basic harmony, even if the rezoning appears inconsistent with other provisions of the comprehensive plan. And so it really is a weighing, your job is to weigh the various policies of the comprehensive plan when you are reviewing something. And, you know, the easy example of this is if you are being asked to put an industrial use in the middle of a residential zone, that cannot be consistent with your comprehensive plan. Now, I’m talking about a heavy industrial use, but what about a lighter industrial use? Well, you may find that, depending upon what your comprehensive plan says, that perhaps a light industrial use with a lot of conditions on it, to make sure that it doesn’t have negative impacts on the neighborhood, that in some cases, that might be okay. It’s more common when you’re allowing commercial uses in what have traditionally been residential zones. And so there, again, you have to look at the comprehensive plan, and if the comprehensive plan says this area should only be residential forever and ever, then it’s almost certainly not going to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. But what comes up more often is, well, what if we’re going to allow greater density? And then you can be looking at various provisions of the plan, because you may have provisions that say greater density should be allowed when a developer is proposing affordable housing, or greater density should be allowed if someone is going to do a more compact development and have more open space associated with it. So there are a lot of ways that you can review this, but you do get to look at the entire comprehensive plan. And usually, there’s something in your comprehensive plan that talks about diversifying your tax base, and that is almost always cited in any conditional or contract zone that I’ve seen in the findings, that it advances that cause to do whatever is being done, particularly if it’s not just a housing development. The other standard that I mentioned to you was consistency with existing and permitted uses. And the Remmel case that I referred to said that it’s pretty much the same standard as consistency with the comprehensive plan. So in other words, proposed uses have to be in basic harmony with those existing and permitted uses. Sometimes you will hear a challenge, or at least comments made, that you shouldn’t allow something, a conditional or contract zone, that allows a use that hasn’t been allowed in that zoning district. And I could not find a law court case on that. I thought that there was one, but I do know that there is a Superior Court case from the city of Portland, where the Superior Court Justice said, “Well, if that were the standard, then they wouldn’t need to rezone in the first place.” So that can’t be the standard. Whether you think it’s consistent with the comprehensive plan is a fair question, but the fact that the use is not currently allowed in the zoning district is not something that means it’s not in basic harmony with the existing and permitted uses. Again, you know, you look at the industrial use in the middle of the residential area. That clearly is not in basic harmony with those existing and permitted uses. But if you’re talking about a project that allows greater density, that has affordable housing units in it, that may very well be something that is in basic harmony. And the Portland case was an interesting one. It was a project I was involved in that didn’t actually end up going forward, but it was for a mixed-use zoning district at Morals Corner in Portland, and it was going to, some of you may recall it, I remember it well, because I think I spent about six years of my life trying to get that thing passed, and then it went to court, and then the whole project went away. But it was going to have a stop and shop, and it was going to have apartments, it was going to have townhouses. The townhouses were actually going to be the buffer of the neighborhood, which I thought was an interesting concept, and it was going to have some other retail uses in it. And so in that case, there was a challenge that said, “Look, some of the land that’s being rezoned is industrial, some of it’s residential, and some of it’s commercial. But you can’t, you can’t put the, you can’t put the residential uses in the industrial zone. You can’t put the retail uses into the residential zone.” But the court said, “No, if those uses were allowed in those places, you wouldn’t need to rezone it in the first place, or you’d ask for a tax change.” And that’s not the case. So the question is, does that project generally comply with the requirements, and are the uses consistent? Of course, because you had those three zoning districts, just about every use was consistent in that project. So that’s how that analysis is done. The third requirement under state law is that the conditions be related to the physical development or operation of the property. And some of you may recall a case from 2012 involving the city of Saco, the Goldar case, and that was the issue, one of the issues that was raised in that case, was that the neighbor said that the contract zoning agreement included things such as public beach access, including deeding beach rights to the city, off-site parking for the beach use, and while it’s not referenced that much in the court decision, it also involved the installation of public restrooms. And the court determined that those uses were, in that case, related to the contract zone, because those had been historic uses in that area, and in fact, some of them had been allowed by the prior owners of the property, by the sisters. And so because of that, and because it was ensuring that that historic public use of the beach could continue, in that case, those were appropriate standards, even though they were off-site requirements. The law court did say that when off-site requirements are being done, it probably is good practice for the municipality to include findings in the rezoning documents as to why those are being done. Now, now obviously, if you’re requiring the sidewalks be built, or something like that, you may not have to explain that, but if you’re doing something that’s off-site, then you should include some type of finding. So what are the alternatives to conditional and contract zones? Well, you can just do an outright text change of your zoning, or you can do what’s called a floating zone. That’s not something that we talk about a lot in Maine, but there are municipalities that have created zoning districts, but they don’t apply them. So there’s no map change that goes with them. So they create text, and I think these days, it’s most common to do that, say, for affordable housing. And so you say, “Okay, well, this is what it can look like,” and you develop the text, and then you later apply it to one or more properties through the zoning map amendment process. And the zoning map amendment process, if you chose to do something, that’s when you’re really going to have to do the analysis of, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Now, floating zones can also be applied through a conditional or contract, through a conditional zoning, because a conditional zoning is usually an amendment to an existing zoning district, or you create a zoning district, and then you apply it. Whereas a contract zone, you just write what is going to apply to that property, and so you’re not creating a zone that’s going to be applied someplace else, unless somebody else comes in and negotiates the same contract. So that is my basic introduction to conditional and contract zoning. I didn’t want to do a long presentation, because I think there are a lot of questions about these issues, and I think it’s more helpful to you to be able to, and the board, to be able to ask your questions of me, rather than me lecturing you for an hour and a half, which I could do, but it’s not always the most interesting thing.
Correct. Thank you so much. Planning Board, any questions at this point right now for Natalie?
One question I get stuck on is the definition of the unusual nature or location of the property.
Yes, and I know that’s been a problem. I recall, I was here with a private party applying for one, and that was something that the Planning Board struggled with. And as I noted, first of all, that is a Saco zoning ordinance requirement, not a statutory requirement. And there are a few things that, you know, applicants will always say that there’s something unusual about their property, and I think you really just go through the process with them, let them make their presentation about what’s unusual about that property. I think that in the Goldar case, the discussion was that it was a, was that it was a property that had been in a very unique use for a long period of time, and that the applicant, in order to get a, in order to be able to do a development, the developer had to install a street, and so the developer asked for lesser street standards with a requirement that it not- And so, the developer asked for lesser street standards with a requirement that it not be a city street. If they're not going to build to your requirements, you're not going to accept it. And that was part of the contract. And I think something else about it was that it, I think it was its proximity to the water. And so, those things were used to give that developer, even though the use was allowed, it was a single-family development, it was allowed, the developer was allowed slightly greater density and not having to meet the street requirements. But that's why that one was considered to be unique property. As to, I'm trying to remember what happened with Convenient MD, because that certainly did come up during the Convenient MD review process, as to what was unusual about it. And I think it might have been the access to the property, that it had the Route 1 access, but it also had another access to it. And so, because of that, that particular use was more appropriate there than the original uses, because it did allow for a safe access, not all directly onto Route 1 and from Route 1. So, it is a struggle, and I think because it is something that Saco has put in there, and there isn't any, there isn't real guidance in the ordinance as to exactly how that is to be applied. But I do think that if you are seeing serial requests for contract or conditional rezonings for the same property, at that point in time, you need to think about whether you need to do a general rezoning, if there's an interest in that for the city, rather than doing one by one. And so, that's about the best I can do on that, but I think that's where that's going.
Natalie, would you agree, or maybe some direction?
Matt, could you just pull the?
Sorry. Is that better?
That's okay.
As far as a property with an unusual nature, would that be, would you define that as something that cannot change? Part one, and then part two, something that an applicant or a landowner has not created? So, just leave it at that. I guess that's my question.
Sure.
I see the unusual nature as something that cannot be changed. So, that unusual nature is gonna, that stays with the property forever. And it can't be a condition that an owner has created themselves. How does that come into play?
Well, that is a way that the board could interpret it, as far as it not being something that either the applicant caused, or that the applicant could not change. If the applicant, I'm not quite sure how an applicant could cause, technically, the applicant always causes the need for the rezoning by asking for it. But you're really talking about, "Well, they're saying that this access has to be this way," when in fact, they might be able to do it a different way, and that's their choice. Those are things that you can consider, but...
Yeah, so, I'm thinking something like an underground aquifer. An applicant didn't create that and can't change it, but an applicant couldn't come and say, "Well, I can't put the road here, because I have a great big pond that I dug myself," sort of thing. Like that, you know, that's the question.
The board, I'm sorry, yes, the board could certainly say, "Well, that's something that you brought on yourself." You know, it always depends upon the circumstances. Maybe they did, the owner did that because it needed to be done for another compelling reason, and then you would take that into consideration. But if the owner did something, and then came in and said, "Well, now I've got an unusual property," yeah, I think it's perfectly fair for the board, and then the council to say, "Well, you know, we don't think that that's because of the unique nature of the property. We think that's something that you did, and you created that situation." But remember, that with any property, an owner does have a right to some use of it, but they're not ever entitled to a rezoning. I think that's important to keep in mind. It is a legislative determination. And so, unless you have zoned a property so that there's no beneficial use of it, in which case, they're going to qualify for some kind of variance, unless you've done that, then the fact that they're not getting the maximum return on it, it's just like in the variance context for the zoning board of appeals, that you're not entitled to a maximum return on your property, you're entitled to some return, and that means a beneficial use. So, if somebody says, "Well, I can only build three housing units," and you say, "Well, we think the current zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, we don't think what you're asking for is," they're not entitled to that rezoning. That doesn't mean they won't challenge you, but they almost certainly will not be successful if you say no to a rezoning. They'll be successful, an opponent will be successful if you haven't followed the procedures and the requirements under the statute and the ordinance, but otherwise, your decision is going to be given great deference, as I discussed earlier.
Thank you.
Any other planning board members with questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, coming off of this discussion about unusual nature of the property, in regards to that standard, and also in regards to a proposal being tied back to our comprehensive plan, I think throughout our meetings, we are often faced with a situation where the applicant comes in with maybe a little bit of proof in their mind, or some argument to make, saying, "This is why the property is unusual, this is why the property, this use is going to fit with the comprehensive plan." Is it the applicant's burden to provide that to us in an overwhelming way? And are we ever allowed in a situation where maybe as board members, we're more familiar with the property than an out-of-state, you know, landscape architect might be? Should we ever be adding in reasons that the property is unusual in nature or location?
Yes, absolutely. And again, it's important to remember that just as what the council is doing is legislative in nature, this is the one time that what the planning board is doing is also legislative in nature. And so, all the things you've been told about, I think I've told you this sometimes, don't rely on evidence other than what is presented to you. That's not true in the case of a rezoning. You can look, you can rely on your own knowledge. That's why you're planning board members, because you are knowledgeable about the land use policies of the city, and you're knowledgeable about the areas of the city. And so, if you want to say, as part of a presentation, "I don't think you've provided us with enough information," or if somebody provides you with what you think is not enough information, and you think, well, and you say, "In addition to what you say," I think the following things are relevant, and can be considered in support of your position, that this is a unique property, or that this use is consistent with uses in the area in particular. So, yes, you are allowed to rely on your own knowledge of the city and of the conditions in the area, and you also are allowed to tell somebody who's making a presentation to you that you don't think they've provided you with enough information for you to be able to make the required findings.
Okay. Board members, I want to pause there for a second and see if anyone has questions on that, because that's definitely outside of our normal habit, I think, as a board. It's only a matter of time before we're doing this process again with an application. Any questions on that? I think, Natalie, in regards to what you just said, there have been times in the past where I think we've seen staff memos for contract zones that have seemed like staff has included more information than maybe what the applicant included as well, in terms of like the history of a parcel, or that kind of thing, which often can feel to us, maybe like it's, you know, over a line, but with what you're saying, that would make sense.
It's perfectly fine for the staff to do that. In fact, my own opinion is, it's helpful for staff to do that. And the municipalities that I represent, that do have professional planners, we expect to see that kind of information from them, because the applicant usually doesn't have that history. And so, the planner can say, "Oh, you know, you had another application for a rezoning for this parcel back in whatever, or you did a rezoning of a parcel in the neighborhood for this in, you know, 10 years ago." And that information may be very helpful to you. Usually, your planner knows what information is helpful to you better than anybody else does, from prior discussions, prior applications, what things the board, in the first instance, and then the council is concerned about. So, again, I know that that pushes up against the training that you've had about, "Don't be taking an advocacy position." And I don't think it is an advocacy position, but when it's quasi-judicial, no advocacy. But when it's legislative, it is okay to have this additional background. In fact, the courts expect you to consider things that are relevant. So, wherever those come from, that's fine. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that when a staff member presents that to you, it's not necessarily that the staffer is saying, "Oh, you know, I think this is a great idea, and you should do it." It's more, "Here's your history, here's the whole background of this thing," so that you can make a well-informed decision, whichever way it goes.
Anyone else before I ask my next question? No? Standard four, we always trip on this one. I know that you mentioned you didn't have too much to add in regards to an interpretation of it. I think my experience with how we've tackled it over the past several years has been that we've seen it as a, almost, and correct me if I'm wrong, other members, but almost like a pass/fail of the standards leading up to it.
Are you talking about the conditions proposed are sufficient to meet the intent of the section?
Yes.
Again, that's a Saco creation. But to me, that has always meant, if you're going to have a use that is not, that is either different from the same use in this area, or it's a new use, then you have to, these conditions have to make sure that the way that it's operated, and the way it's developed, are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, if somebody says, "Well, you know, I just want to do, I just want to do this," I think this really comes up more in the format of the agreement or the conditional rezoning, because some of them are very broad, and they allow a lot of flexibility. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it is more common with the municipalities I work with, to really try to nail the details down, so that there aren't any surprises, so that you can say, "Yes, the conditions are sufficient to meet the intent of the section. We are making sure that the use is operated in a manner that's consistent with the other uses in the zoning district. We are making sure that if a use is being allowed that may not be elsewhere in that immediate neighborhood, that that use is not going to have negative impacts on the neighborhood." You know, things like hours of operation, specific noise requirements, things like that. I think that those are the types of things that you're looking at. So, if you have a proposal before you, and of course, as we discussed initially, the proposal comes initially from the property owner. And so, as you're going through the process, you want to have conditions that are making you comfortable, that in fact, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think that's the easier piece. I think it's more that the uses are consistent with the existing uses, and the uses in the underlying zone. I think that's where this really comes in. And if you're looking at it and saying, "Well, you know, I'm not sure about that," then I think that's where this falls, that the conditions proposed aren't sufficient. You just don't feel that the project is going to fit in. I think that falls under D, I've got a D in here, that's not where it actually is. But I think that falls under that standard. And I know that the board has had some struggles with that particular one, as well as with the unusual nature and location, although I think, I think unusual nature and location is a little bit easier than that one is. This one is much more amorphous, I would agree with you. Does that help at all?
More than before this meeting, yes.
I don't want to say you know it when you see it, but some of this really does depend upon what's presented to you. And sometimes you'll say, "Well, gee, I'd be more comfortable with that if we had this condition." And if the developer or the property owner says no to that, then you may be saying that I don't think you meet this requirement.
Councilors, any questions for Attorney Burns? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. I have a couple of questions, if I could toss them in your direction. And you've danced around a few of them, so I'm going to spare us the time to spend. I think one of the issues that I have concerns about is this, we just went through a two-year-long ordinance review update process. My understanding is that the contract zone provision of the old ordinance was not really addressed, so we're carrying forward some past challenges, which we seem to face frequently here at the council level. And one of those areas at a high level, I think, are the vagaries of the ordinance itself, which you've kind of, we've talked about, and whether or not we can take the time to maybe work on clarifying those a little bit more, so that when we talk about the unusual nature of a property, that we have some basis for the planning board to hang their hat on. I think that would be very, very helpful. And we also have, you know, within our, we're also going through a comprehensive plan update. And I've experienced, in my observations, some vagaries within the comprehensive plan at times, where I have an attorney friend of mine, who would tell me that he could probably find something in a comprehensive plan to hang his hat on each and every time, which I understand, but again, eliminating some vagaries in the comp plan might help alleviate and remediate some of those potential problems. So, I do have a couple of very specific questions for you, if I could, off my list. Can you just quickly or briefly describe, and I'm looking at question three on my list to you, how we might improve monitoring landowner compliance with a contract post-execution? That seems to have been a, somewhat of a problem with a few contract zones, where we have landowners who either unintentionally or intentionally didn't really live up to the standards of the contract. Could you address that briefly?
Yes. And best way to address enforcement is to have good language in your contract zone as to how it's going to be enforced. And so, for example, I have boilerplate that I put into every contract zone that I write that says that if there's a violation, it can be pursued under the provisions of the Land Use Enforcement Statute, which is Title 30A, Section 4452. But in addition to that, that any failure to comply with it can be considered a breach of the contract, and that the city may take appropriate action to remedy that breach, which may include a rezoning of the parcel back to the prior or the underlying zone, if it's an overlay zone, which it usually is. And if you put those things in there, then you have the broadest possible relief. And the council, which always makes the determination in consultation with a code enforcement officer and the administration about how to enforce things, then has a variety of things available to it. So, for example, there are very different breaches or violations of a contract zone. So, if you say, under the contract zone, you've established new setbacks. And a property owner by, let's say it's individual lots, property owner buys something, and they violate the setback. Well, you're not going to change the zoning, because one property owner did that, you're going to enforce against that property owner. And so, that's why you want to have the ability to have these different things. We did recently hear, in a municipality, one of my partners represents, they heard from somebody who was doing financing, that, "Oh, they wouldn't finance something, because it said they might rezone the property." And so, we came up with some language that made it clear that if individual units were in violation, that would not result in revocation of the zoning process. Or if there were an overall violation, and the zoning, it was rezoned back to the prior, that any units that were already in lawful existence... that any units that were already in lawful existence would be allowed to continue. So there are ways to handle all of these things, but the most important thing is to have the array of remedies that you want in the contract zone. And it's easy to come up with some standard language for that that allows you to do both those things. And it's important, it's a good thing that you brought that up because there actually was a case from the city of Portland years ago where there was a contract zone that said if there was a violation, the only thing they could do was to, they had to go to the planning board first and try to resolve it, and then there was something else that happened after that. And so the city, when there was a violation, wanted to pursue it under the Land Use Enforcement Statute. And the property owner said, no, you can't do that. And sure enough, the court agreed with the property owner. That was the remedy that the city set up and that was the remedy that the city was stuck with. So it's important that, as I said earlier, that you allow yourself the broad range of remedies for resolution. And of course, you can always have something in there that says that if a project is not started within a certain period of time, then it's going to be rezoned back to the prior designation or the existing in the area at the time.
Thank you.
Because you don't want to have a contract zone sitting out there for 15 years and have somebody come in after everything in the area has changed completely and insists that they're going to do something that you no longer would have approved had it come before you then.
Great, thank you for that. Deputy Mayor McPhail, I'm going to make a couple of comments here and then I'm going to put a motion on the floor, if I could. Since the adoption of Saco's new zoning ordinance earlier this year, it's become apparent that several oversights and omissions have occurred in the process of migrating from the previous ordinance to the recently adopted ordinance. Tonight's vote, which will be occurring later, on adding omitted, permitted, and conditional uses to the new ordinance, particularly related to cannabis, is but one very important example. I find it very disconcerting that a two-year costly processed update to zoning ordinance has encountered so many seemingly fundamental oversights and omissions. Prior to my Ward 5 Councilor appointment, I personally witnessed aspects of the zoning ordinance review process in which confusion, errors, and omissions were occurring with too much frequency. Although this overall dynamic is concerning enough, one of those omissions of particular concern to me has been the apparent failure to address perceived prior weaknesses in the contract zone approval process, its related contract documentation, and its apparent lack of post-execution monitoring by city staff. An email sent today to the City Council, former Planning Board Chair Neil Schuster, in a role which he served for 15 years, indicated, and I quote, "One of the primary goals of the zoning ordinance update was to eliminate the significant amount of contract zones being proposed in the city. In reviewing council agendas, it seems that contract zone proposals, such as the Pizza Hut property on Main Street, have continued unabated." Close quote. "Given several recent contract zone-related landowner performance challenges brought before this council over the last six months or so, failure to address potential improvements to the contract zoning ordinance seems to have placed an unfair burden on the city, its taxpayers, and its landowners. I would also argue that a weak contract zone process can result in an unfair and inappropriate avoidance of current land use zoning restrictions. As a previous recipient of a contract zone from the city of Saco, I fully understand the value of contract zoning in land use planning when it is used sparingly and appropriately. However, a little time and thought needs to be given to improving the contract zone application process as it exists today. In my view, this current situation constitutes an emergency affecting property rights within the city. So I would like to move that the city of Saco hereby enacts an emergency ordinance placing a moratorium on all new contract zone applications for the next 61 days."
Counselor Hatch, would you repeat that moratorium for me? Moratorium for 61 days?
I moved that the city of Saco hereby enacts an emergency ordinance placing a moratorium on all new contract zone applications for the next 61 days.
Okay, there has been a motion made to the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
or advice you may want to give us, but we obviously need to draft this emergency ordinance
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
now.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that you have all the information you need and if there's
Okay, so that is a 3-3 tie.
any other particular comments or feedback that may be relevant at this time.
In that instance, I do have the deciding tie-breaking vote, whereas normally as acting
It was pretty short. I mean, I think it's fairly easy to draft.
mayor, I would not have a vote, but where it is a tie. Would you mind speaking into the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry. The motion of Counselor Hatch seemed relatively clear and unambiguous, so I can certainly
And I will vote yes.
have something for you tomorrow to sign. But my understanding, and explain to me if I'm wrong, but for a period of 61 days,
So a motion would pass, 4-3. Brian, can we get that written up for Counselors so that we have the exact word?
no one is to take action on a contract zone in the city of Saco. Is that a fair summary?
That is fair.
I can have that for you tomorrow.
And Counselor Hatch, would you just clarify, for the purposes of the ordinance, what Do we need? Yeah, yeah. City Solicitor Tim, would you come up and address? you are anticipating coming out of it? Yeah.
Fair question. I would like to direct the city administrator to direct staff to put together some information that we can address as a council. I have a list of things that I would like to share with you. And I'm not sure it's an all-inclusive list. I don't want to make it personal. Everybody else can chip in, but I have things like inventorying, current contract zones. I'm interested in staff time devoted to the process. I'm interested in determining whether or not the language within our existing contracts needs to be modified, as well as language within the ordinance that needs to be clarified. So there's a broad laundry list. And I would personally be willing to assist in that process.
That's great. If you want to just forward that list to me and we'll talk more tomorrow and also, I think maybe talk also about how we're going to have an inclusive council process in addressing these issues going here.
I'll send you an email and a copy, everybody on the council.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just two items that I'd like to see, it's things I think I've mentioned before in the past, but if we could look at the fee structure to make it marketable to the amount of staff time that we present to put it. And I also want to look at the process because anybody with a property can go straight to contract zoning amendment. Obviously, there's a process, but the way I've seen it is that council doesn't get really any conversations on it, whether or not they like it or not, towards the very end. So you have a lot of staff time, a lot of public time, you have the applicant's time, you have all this time that may come to the very final process where we weren't interested on day one, or we haven't had time for input. So again, I don't know what that process would look like, but I do see it kind of backwards in some cases, just because why would you put hundreds of hours of work, staff and all that, to then have it ultimately fail when maybe in initial discussion, you might have got that opinion in the first place? You know what I'm trying to say? So I don't know how other towns do it, or how can we just, like, be more efficient, I guess, with the processes, really where I'm looking at it.
Yeah, thank you. So Counselor, if you'd like to also email me, may put that into words, email that to me tomorrow, and we will compile, I think, you know, Counselor Hatch, you know, Archer, others, if you have specific concerns or comments, send them to me. We'll compile this and you'll be seeing this back on a future agenda, obviously, for a larger discussion here about how we tackle this. So please just email all this to me. If you want to copy our city planner also and some others who may be involved here, that would be great, but, and we'll get that going. Thank you.
Okay, so once that's all compiled, we'll provide it to City Solicitor Murphy and have a draft.
Well, Tim, you can draft fairly quickly.
Yeah. Brian, would you make a point of forwarding the draft to Counselor Hatch so that we make sure that the factors that he feels were merited the moratorium are properly cited? Because we want to lay a historical foundation as to why you enacted this. So, I mean, I was listening in the back, but I think I understand.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Burns with regard to the training that she presented? Anybody from the planning board?
Well, I am sensing that we're heading in a new direction now as a city with contract zones, perhaps, so we may need you again at a future time.
My only objective is to make life easier.
I know, I know.
And more productive.
Yeah.
For all of us.
We'll have to continue these trainings with whatever comes of this.
Attorney Burns, did you have any additional updates for the group?
No, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but otherwise, we'll leave this in your capable hands.
And again, this is, you know, per the codes, we do get together twice a year to go over some training questions, so if anybody has any general questions for Attorney Burns, now would be the time to ask. And, okay, not seeing any. So I guess that would conclude. Thank you so much. I appreciate the planning board's time coming out tonight. I know, you know, you guys are just as busy and got a meeting tomorrow night. So again, thank you for coming out and joining us. Okay, that will now bring us to Action Item B, one reading, Amendment of Interstate Rate on Overpayment Refunds. Counselor Hatch?
Under Title 36 MRSA Section 506-A, a municipality must repay overpayment of taxes in the amount of the overpayment plus interest from the date of overpayment at a rate that is not less than the rate set for delinquent taxes, less four percentage points. Currently, the rate set for delinquent taxes is 6%, but the rate set for return of overpayment of taxes is 0%. This motion raises the rate set for overpayment of taxes to the state-mandated minimum of 2%. The rate set for return of prepayment of taxes remains at 0%. Be it ordered that the city council amend the refund interest rate for overpayment of fiscal year 2022 tax payments to 2%, I move to approve the order.
Thank you. There has been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gunn? Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any discussion. Time for roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 6-0 for the amendment. Back to the main motion. Any discussion? Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Attorney Murphy, I'm, first and foremost, my first question is, why is this?
Under title 36 MRSA, section 506-A, a municipality must repay overpayment of taxes in the amount of the overpayment plus interest from the date of overpayment at a rate that is not less than the rate set for delinquent taxes, less four percentage points. Currently, the rate set for delinquent taxes is 6%, but the rate set for return of overpayment of taxes is 0%. This motion raises the rate set for overpayment of taxes to the state mandated minimum of 2%. The rate set for return of prepayment of taxes remains at 0%. Be it ordered that the city council amend the refund interest rate for overpayment of fiscal year 2022 tax payments to 2%. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. There has been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councillor Gunn. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any discussion. Time for roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that now takes us to action item C, one reading, emergency, chapter 168. Councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The city planning board recently conditionally approved a medical marijuana registered dispensary, also the city's prior life safety ordinance, chapter 165, which regulated marijuana uses expired by its own terms. This circumstance leaves the city without adequate life safety regulations governing certain marijuana uses included, including registered dispensaries. This constitutes an emergency. Staff have drafted a proposed emergency life safety ordinance to be, to be put in place to afford the city council time to consider, draft, and offer for council consideration a comprehensive regulatory program for marijuana uses. Staff recommend approval of the proposed emergency ordinances. I move to approve a chapter 168 as an emergency ordinance of the city to be applied retroactively back to January 11th, 2021.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councillor Hatch? Okay, I would like to invite city solicitor Murphy up to assist with any discussion. And is there any discussion? Councillor Archer?
Yes, I understand the need that this is an emergency and that we're also voting on chapter 168 immediately after. However, my one question is, why are cash sales prohibited? Is that a state law?
I'm sorry?
Cash sales, why are they being prohibited?
So that is a suggestion because by nature, the cash businesses create risk for the people in the buildings and for the citizens.
But we don't do this with Rite Aid. And my dad was a pharmacist who actually was, they had a machete up in Rockland. So to apply this one principle to only one business, which there's other businesses that are similar, I just don't see the need because I feel if it applied to other businesses, okay, I'd be more on board, but I just want to know why that was in here because I would like to amend it to stricken the cash.
It's in there because predominantly, these are cash businesses and it would be safer for the community, one assumes, if cash was not present so that they weren't targets for theft and criminal activity. That's a judgment call for you to make. My suggestion would be if that is a concern, don't do it, don't address it now in the emergency ordinance because it's meant as a temporary placeholder. Address it in the main ordinance that you start undertaking a review of tonight. The regular order, chapter 168, is exactly meant for that reason. It's a placeholder to allow you all to bring your ideas forward to have an ordinance. So my suggestion, while I completely agree with your point councillor, it's best made when we take up 168 in the regular order versus right now during the emergency ordinance.
Well, it's also best had documents that are consistent, so I'm going to operate on that. So I am going to make an amendment that we stricken cash sales aren't prohibited and which we would allow cash, just like we do any of our other legal businesses.
Okay, so councillor Archer, you are motioning to amend?
Section seven.
Yep.
Or B seven.
Section 168 for B seven.
B seven.
Correct? Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councillor Berman? Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any discussion. Roll call vote on the amendment only. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six zero for the amendment. Back to the main motion. Any discussion? Councillor Purdy?
Thank you. Attorney Murphy, I'm, first and foremost, my, my, my first question is why is this even necessary when we have a moratorium in place that goes until December 23rd?
So the, the moratorium covers the issuance of permits such as a certificate of occupancy, business license. This is to get in place regulatory scheme in terms of where do the registry, where do the registered dispensaries go to get their permit? What kind of permit do they need? How much do they pay for that permit? When they're going to get their permit? Are you going to have life safety, David Toomey's office go inspect the buildings? Are you going to have the electrical inspector inspect the buildings? So throughout the city, there are regulatory schemes that allow key city personnel to oversee businesses, to make sure that they're operating safely. The mere passing of the zoning doesn't assure that these businesses will be safe for the community. So it's, it's, the need arises now because now we've got a registered dispensary here as part of, as part of the community.
Okay, thank you. Couple of other things I wanted to address is the, well, number one, the retroactivity of it. The operating hours, I think, are incredibly restrictive and is this, I mean, we don't regulate Rite Aid as to when they, as councillor, when they can operate or Shaw's or Hannover or anybody else. I think it would be incredibly difficult as a person who works during the day as well if I had the need for that, if I was, you know, to obtain a marijuana product. But, so I think that, I really think that's unfairly restrictive to, to.
Again.
Any potential businesses, plus any businesses that are already operating in, in the city. Is this going to retroactively?
No.
Affect their operating hours?
No, it's just, it would only affect dispensaries. And again, these are meant as placeholders until you can decide what, what provisions you want, how, what are the hours of operation you want? You just tell us and we'll put it in the ordinance. So again, we have to give you something to start with.
Right.
As, as a base point. So your points also, like councillor Archer's, well taken.
Thank you. I know other, other councils probably have some questions as well. I'll, I'll stop for now.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Councillor Berman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I'm deeply concerned about this item for now three reasons. The first is I worry our standards for emergency ordinances are slipping a little bit. I don't want policy we don't like or the current council doesn't agree with to constitute an emergency. Second, I'm concerned that this chapter 168 has several policy decisions in it, ones that we've been discussing a little bit about opening hours and cash acceptance. Some of these policy decisions are probably unfriendly to cannabis businesses and they may be inconsistent with our long-term goals for the role of cannabis in Saco. I understand that our, our planning board is currently working on updating our zoning in that regard. I worry that passing this now will create a state of confusion if it's inconsistent with our eventual long-term goals and plans. And third, I'm really concerned, well, and I'm concerned that the policy is coming to us really from a single staff member and not from a thought out, transparent and fair process in which the public could have input. And third, I'm really concerned about the retroactivity and I'm concerned about the fairness that that creates. Those who have applied for site approval on Main Street, while I may not agree that their business belongs there, they were applying consistent with the rules as written. To today, to go back and change those rules to make them read as if we wished they had read at the time, I fear sets a dangerous precedent. There may be many businesses that could open on Main Street consistent with our current rules that I would personally disagree with and believe are not in the best interest of Saco. But I believe we are stuck to abiding by and being consistent with our current rules and not because I disagree or other city staff disagree or the mayor disagrees, retroactively changing the rules such that people would have had to comply with rules that didn't exist at the time. I, so I'm concerned about many aspects of this. And I would like, in response to some of that, although I urge us to vote no on it, I would like to move to amend this to remove the retroactivity. So I move to amend the motion to strike to be applied retroactively back to January 11th, 2021, so that we're not putting obligations in place that weren't there when businesses have gone through the process.
Second for discussion?
Okay, a motion has been made by councillor Berman to remove the retroactivity from January 11th, 2021. Councillor Archer, second. And discussion?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Archer, hold on. Councillor Johnson first.
Thank you. I had a prior question, but since councillor Berman has, has made the motion, he has, I'm curious if attorney Murphy could explain by making the zoning amendments under action item E and the retroactivity to Jan. 11th under this emergency ordinance, how does that impact 247 Main Street?
So it won't. If you enact the zoning ordinance tonight as crafted and as proposed, the application at 240 Main Street, 247 Main is essentially mooted. But I don't know what you're going to do. This, this particular ordinance is because a registered dispensary may become applicable here in town, so you want to start the process of creating life safety regulations. Whether you make it retroactive or not, it's not going to be a factor. Because, so the, the motion is, is fine. I gave you something to start with and you're perfectly free to amend it as you think is appropriate, but.
So I'm correctly hearing that going through this action does not impact that current application? It just would impact subsequent applications?
It, it won't depending on how you vote on section E.
Okay.
Which is the reason.
But the emergency ordinance before us right now?
No.
Does not impact?
If you enact the zoning and, and apply it retroactively, the zone changes, then it won't because that vote alone moots the ability of the applicant there to be on Main Street because you will have rezoned that use out of the downtown district.
Okay.
But I can't anticipate what you're going to do.
Right, I understand. I just, it's a lot here that I've been trying to wrap my head around over the last several weeks. And I guess the other question I have, which, I mean, I've looked at our definitions, I've looked at state definitions, and I'm still not clear what the difference between a registered dispensary is and a medical marijuana caregiver, retail, or whatever we're calling it.
The definitions are overlapping, to say the least, but.
Would I be correct? I mean, I've gone back and I remember when this came through the ordinance process back in the early 2010s, 11s. Would I be correct in my assumption or my research that says that a law change occurred that basically made our prior definition mute? And now caregivers have basically essentially become dispensaries? Whereas before, they just had certain, I guess clientele or patients?
The, the dispensaries are, have, have been broadened in terms of who they reach.
Before it was.
Much tighter.
Five or six.
And they can be, they can now be for-profit entities. They can, they can sell and, but it's still medical marijuana they're selling. So you got guidance from the planning board, you've come up with an ordinance, now you're going to do your final reading tonight, and the retroactivity provision in that proposed ordinance mirrors what you've been doing with the moratorium that you passed three times, which was to make marijuana applicable back to when you passed zoning in, in January of this year. So if you do that, the, the current applicant would, is, is unable to open, but they're unable to open now because of the moratorium. So the city moratorium. Again, I would not look at this as an issue related to this one applicant. You have to decide globally what's best for the city. Where is this use best placed? And it appears after your discussions that you've decided that the industrial park and the B1 zone are the best places for this use. This allows you to, the zoning ordinance, which is, I think, item E, allows you to accomplish that if you add the retroactivity provision. Some people may view this as unfair. I don't. The law court here in the state of Maine has routinely said, communities can make laws retroactive. And this applicant that you're speaking of councillor Berman, won't be surprised, you've enacted three moratoriums. So they are aware of how essentially a majority of this council has felt up till now. What is the appropriate life safety regulation? You're going to need some and they always can be improved. So councillor Berman, you're right. Everything can be made better, can be made more targeted, more, more effective. So that's why we're also giving you a draft ordinance in the regular order so that you can start the process of fleshing out, how do you want to regulate this? Because right now, we don't have licensing for these entities. Are they inspected? You know, I can tell you from experience, the city electrician Marcel De Rochers worries about this particular use because the equipment to shine lights on marijuana and then to also dehumidify the facilities, the electrical draw from those equipment pieces is so large that we've had at least one panel that, in a building that literally exploded. Someone easily could have been killed. So you've got an industry where there's, there are these factors that people don't necessarily think about, but we want our electrical inspectors to go into those buildings. We want code enforcement to go into those buildings. So there is a legitimate purpose behind this. Now, the question is, what is the content of those ordinances? That's for you. My job's to give you a placeholder to start with. If there are parts that are too restrictive, well, that's up, clearly amend those and that's perfectly fine. We want something that you like, that meets your goals, and so that's, we're giving you that placeholder.
I agree with your statement about, you know, life safety issues. I was on this council back in 2017 when we enacted chapter 135. It would appear that that has, has expired, I guess. It was an emergency ordinance, though I do recall making amendments to it in 2019. Now perhaps they weren't done correctly, but this particular emergency ordinance and chapter 168 that's next on the agenda makes references to chapter 135. So I'm just curious, shouldn't we be bringing back that ordinance? Because that's the one that had the real meat and potatoes as far as electrical, you know, inspections.
It actually didn't have as much as we might want.
It required, I remember specifically, it required no house to be serviced with more than 200 amp panel. And I just recently, while going through listings, found a property here in, in Saco that's being listed as a home and grow. And you look at the garage they added and it has a 12,000 amp voltage.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, that, that was part of the reason we had that chapter. I remember Marcel specifically coming up with how we regulated it to just a 200 amp panel. So I just, I think that if we're going to do 168 where it makes reference to 135, we probably should bring back 135.
And that's the example of why getting something started tonight is important because then you can get it to your professional staff, you can get it to the fire department, you can get it to the city electrician, you can get it to codes and get them started. And then they'll bring you back the feedback that you need to mirror, so for instance, the council feels like, well, we want different hours or we want to be able to allow cash sales. Those are all policy questions for you and they appropriately belong with you, not with me. This is, is to get you started. So that's where this is intended.
Councillor Archer?
Thank you. Actually, some of those questions have been asked. But with us, again, we're currently on the amendment to, we haven't voted on that yet correctly.
No.
Thank you. If we get rid of retroactively and we vote for, and I know you can't, I'm asking more about process than outcome. It creates a start time, 61 days, correct? Now, item D, which is going to be the long-term, chapter 16, the permanent 168, another way to say it, that could actually start after 61, correct? Day 61?
Yeah, you can pass it whenever you feel.
Well, no, I'm, I'm thinking about that gap of time. The last thing I want is another headache because we've had a lot of these and we weren't prepping for it. So I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure that the process, not the outcome, but how do we prevent that? Do we make amendments now that we want to do for chapter, for section D? Get that clarified now so that when the emergency ends and the new one begins, it's kind of more cleaner than just passing it here and then correcting it down the road and then we have this gap? All of a sudden, you've got businesses not knowing what's going on, you have staff that's kind of confused just because we have these two, emergency and a proposed.
But I think what you're asking is if we go through the three-meeting process, when we approve that, can we cancel the emergency order?
Sure.
And put the new one in place? Is that?
But that's part of it, but also what happens if we haven't just done all of our, we haven't finished the product? 61 days passes because we're going into, we're going into holidays, so 61 days is shorter during this time of the year. So let's just say it takes 75 days to get the next item done.
There'll be a gap.
And now we have a two-week gap. I, we should be creating the, a draft formal under this emergency ordinance. So we should be doing our amendments now. So that there isn't that confusion down the road.
That's up to the wisdom of the council.
Okay.
But that's why I had to give it to you as two separate, both as an emergency because we now have.
Yes.
A conditionally approved dispensary, but without regulations governing it.
Okay.
And as a regular order, chapter 168. You can make the amendments to both if you want.
Yeah.
That's completely up to you.
Well, and that's the thing, I'm trying to prevent future confusion.
Yeah.
If it comes to that.
If the retroactivity is a concern, then.
Nope, that's not my concern at all. I actually support it. So in that case, let's go and then I'll have amendment after we deal with the current one on the floor.
I'm sorry, you want to what?
I'm going to let it go back to the current amendment that's on the floor. Let's get that one over with and then I'll have another proposal.
Okay, so the current amendment on the floor right now is to remove the retroactivity from January 11th, 2021. Councillor Archer, second. Any other discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six one on the amendment. Back to the main motion. Any discussion? Councillor Archer?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, with that, my justification on why and the reasoning for it, I'd also like to amend B two with the hours, eight till six, and I will say that that's arbitrary at this moment, but what's not arbitrary is I think we definitely need to get rid of the weekend or state and federal holiday prohibitions. So omit, it may not operate or be opened for business during any weekend or state or federal holiday.
Leaving the hours the same, eight to five?
I can, I can do that for now because hours we can change easily, but I do not want us closing for certain holidays just because we don't know the justification why. And again, we don't do that with other businesses.
Yep. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to amend 168 for B number one, uh, number two, omitting weekends and holidays. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by councillor Gunn. Any discussion? Councillor Berman?
Thank you. I'm concerned about this process. Councillor Murphy correctly noted that there are many issues related to cannabis cultivation that involve electrical inspection. that involve electrical inspection, hours, safety, banking. We have city staff that are experts in these things, or at least will have strong opinions as the best way to craft this ordinance to both protect the business owners and the city. We've not had a chance to hear from any of them about what they would recommend, what is likely to work for our city, or what is likely to ensure both the safety and efficacy of these businesses. To create arbitrary hours, timelines, banking methods is simply that. It's arbitrary. I would, we have our code enforcement officer here and our city planner here. If we're going to make these arbitrary decisions, perhaps we should at least hear from them about what their recommendations are and their experience with these things, and how we can best ensure both safety and business friendliness.
And again, as City Solicitor Murphy has stated, we have the option with the second motion coming through. That will have a public hearing. That will have discussion. That will be an opportunity for the residents, business owners, to speak. I'm not sure. So is there a motion that you're making on that, or is it?
I would, I'd be, not a motion. I would be interested in hearing from some other city staff about recommended changes to Chapter 168 if we're trying to make it effective today.
Yeah, we have Director Toomey in the audience. We also have Director Garnum. Director Toomey, would you like to?
Both of you want to come up and just offer any opinions or insights you may have here? Or, you know, Jason, if you feel free.
Do you have any specific questions that you want to address?
Do you guys, in your experience, both as, from the planning department and from the code enforcement office, are there concerns that we should be taking into account about the safe operation or not of cannabis businesses? Does this ordinance meet those concerns? Are there areas of either overreach or underreach that we should be considering?
There's always been electrical issues because they're always changing, and they'll add more equipment in that they're not aware of that they have power for. So we do like to be able to get in there on a yearly basis, where in most businesses, once they open, we never get back unless they change it. So we'd like that. As far as operation hours and stuff like that, we enforce the rules. You guys make the rules, so we're not as concerned about those things. As far as retroactive cash, all that stuff, it doesn't really matter to me. We just need to make sure we have access to these types of businesses, that's all.
Thanks for calling us up. I'll be honest, I did not have a lot of time to study the ordinances that are proposed before you. As you know, I have been studying this issue in preparation for working with the planning board on developing some draft ordinances for the zoning code. From my perspective, this ordinance seems premature in relation to that process. However, not having a detailed understanding of the content, I have neither a specific criticism nor feedback on how to improve it initially, although I appreciate the thoughtful questions that you're, you're asking tonight during this process.
And I'd like to add that I get many calls from people who want to start this type of business, and we have no rules. So I tell them to reach out to the councilors to do something, you know, so we can come up with rules that I can enforce. So I see this as a starting point. They may be overly strict, but you can change that. This is just, we have nothing on the books, so until you put something on the books to change, there's nothing I can enforce. So, thank you.
Do you have a sense, City Planner, where the planning board might be going in terms of zoning ordinance changes?
Not exactly. My, my intention is to present essentially a menu of options. There are many considerations on this issue, ranging from which zoning districts to allow which types of marijuana uses, to things like what types of performance standards we want to enforce and administer as part of that ordinance. I don't really have, have a clear guess, although the planning board does seem interested in being fair-minded about allowing future businesses as appropriate within the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any additional questions? Councilor Johnston?
Not a question, just overall comment. So if somebody has a question for staff, they can go ahead.
Councilor, was that, who had a question? No questions?
No questions.
No questions on this side?
Then I would just say, I think that I have consistently felt like we've been playing from behind on this issue. And I'm in agreement with Councilor Berman, though I will say I support this emergency ordinance as proposed, only because I feel like we're doing amendments tonight. I'm not fully grasping it, and we need something on the books. But, I mean, this issue is not new. It came up during the revision process. I advocated for addressing it at the time. We didn't do it. It is what it is now. But, you know, here we are. I just feel like, you know, I'm standing here with my pants down. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it's kind of like, I want to get this right. Clearly, I'm not feeling we're getting it right. I understand the approach, where we're going to try to make amendments to the emergency ordinance, but then we also have an ordinance before us after this. So to me, it's just pass the ordinance as proposed, whether we like it or not, and then we can take this up. I mean, I believe last July, when this issue first came up on Main Street, I had suggested a joint meeting with the planning board. I don't know why it didn't happen. I think it was support from other councilors. But ever since then, I feel like they're kind of hodgepodgeing it together without input from us, and we're doing it without input from them. And ultimately, we were doing this without input from staff and the public. So, I mean, I guess that's me venting. But it's just overall bad process. And anybody that has listened to me for eight years now knows that this is my biggest pet peeve. I don't care about the ultimate outcome. It's the process. Get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So again, comment as well. This is why I'm making these amendments, because this is the issue with emergency ordinances when they're not necessarily an emergency, as Councilor Burnham has brought up. You use them sparingly. It's, we have to make a decision within one night. That's what the, that's what happens when you have an emergency ordinance. So we don't have all the information. I learned about this on Thursday night, and I didn't actually get to read it until Friday. So I'm saying I need to create one of the most protective documents I can in this one moment, because this is the only chance we have. When I said arbitrarily, I meant that. I'm not hiding the fact. I said that because the three-part process allows for input. This doesn't allow for input unless we actually ask for it. So that's why I was trying to say, hey, we don't typically do this for other businesses, so why all of a sudden are we doing it for this one? So you're not, I'm not talking about a thousand-foot from a city school. I'm not, I'm talking about what we don't do to other businesses. And that's why I put the amendments forward with the no cash sales and the current one on the, on the weekends and holidays, because we don't do this to other businesses. So I'm just trying to have it uniformed. Again, let's have the major conversations for the real non-emergent, Chapter 168, which I'm open for. But again, we have to create the document, because this one goes live once we, if we vote for it, it goes live immediately. And that's my initial concern.
And I understand that. I just, why pass any ordinance at all then? If we have a moratorium in place until December, around Christmas, just let, ride with that and fix this over the next several weeks. I mean, to me, it's like we're, I'm with you. I got an agenda, and I looked at it and go, what's Chapter 168? There was no even, I mean, if I'm the member of a public, I'm looking at this going, what is this even about? And a lot of people just look at the agenda, and if they didn't see marijuana-related whatever, they don't know what that is. So, I mean, that was my first initial thought, was, you know, what the hell is this? And of course, you know, here we are. Again, we're, I hate operating in a vacuum. And I'm, really, I'm getting sick of it. I am.
Councilor Purdy, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, to piggyback on what's already been said, I'm uncomfortable with, with the process. This is, there are times I think things move way too slow, and there are times that I think things move way too fast, and this is one of those occasions. As Councilor Archer said, we got the, we got the packet Thursday, and I never got a chance to look at it until Saturday afternoon. And have reread it three times, and, and I'm still going back looking, trying to figure it all out. I'm uncomfortable passing an emergency ordinance that frankly, I don't see as emergency right now, because we have the moratorium in place. On the other hand, I would like to say thank you, at least we've finally got the ball rolling on this. I mean, we've, we've extended the moratorium two times, and I've said before that I'm, the only reason I'm voting for the moratorium is, is to give time for the proper process to play out. And so we are finally moving forward, and for that, I am grateful. But frankly, I just, I can't support this emergency amendment. I will, however, support the, the next one, because I do want the process to start. Let's start the three-meeting process. Let's get input from all the staff and, and the public, and let's get the ball rolling on this, and let's do it, and do it right the first time. I don't want to mess up this emergency amendment and then have to fix it over the course of the next three meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If I were a businessman trying, or a businessperson, trying to start a cannabis business in Saco, I'd first be actively waving my arms at them. But then I also would have seen a zoning ordinance that appeared to allow registered dispensaries on Main Street, and then I would have seen a moratorium, and then I might see an emergency, Chapter 168, and then I might see a different chapter, permanent Chapter 168, and then I might see zoning ordinance revisions that necessitated further changes, both to the building codes and where and what was allowed. There may be five different marijuana regulatory schemes facing these business people within the context of 12 months. And to me, that is the opposite of business friendly. That's the opposite of development friendly. That's the opposite of fair. That's the opposite of transparent. That's the opposite of the things that we want to be doing. I just don't think it's best practices. I think it sends the wrong message about our priorities. I think it sends the wrong message about who we are. And I agree with Councilor Purdy. We have a moratorium in place. I don't see the need for an emergency, Chapter 168.
Are there any additional questions for Director Toomey or Director Garnum? Guys, thank you so much for coming up. Any other?
I'm going to withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
For the main purpose, I'll be just voting this down.
Okay, Councilor Gunn, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, great. Okay, so that goes back to the main motion.
Can we just clarify what the main motion is?
I'm sorry?
Can we clarify what the main motion is?
I'm sorry. Councilor Archer has withdrawn his amendment to omit hours, to omit the weeks, weekends and holidays from 168-4, Section B, number two. And Councilor Gunn has withdrawn his second.
But the main motion will be inclusive of the other two amendments, including the cash prohibition and the retroactivity.
Correct, yes. So, back to the main motion. Which was seconded by Councilor Hatch. Any additional discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Given that I don't really know where this is going to go, I do think it's pertinent to point out that, I believe the charter requires that any ordinance that's put before us starts with hereby ordains and approves. So, to avoid any potential legal, unnecessary legal challenge to something, if this does go through, I would look to amend the main motion so that says the city of Saco hereby ordains and approves Chapter 168, yada, yada, yada. Right now, the motion just says I move to approve.
Okay, I apologize. I did not hear all of that.
Okay, so, just, it might be, you know, a small little thing, but again, the charter specifically requires that any ordinance that's put before us is hereby ordains and approves. So I'm just, as written, the motion appears to be, I move to approve Chapter 168, and I'm just adding, the city of Saco hereby ordains and approves Chapter 168.
Tim, do you have, is that something we can just?
Say again?
Is it, do we need a motion to do that? Can we just?
No, it's an amendment like...
It does need to be an amendment.
Oh, no. No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a formal.
Nobody objects to it, so.
So it's just rereading the motion?
Yeah, just read it, and it'll be fine.
Okay. Councilor Dunne, would you like to reread the main motion with the?
Yeah.
Suggestion of Councilor Johnston ordaining?
The city of, the city of Saco hereby ordains and approves Chapter 168 as an emergency ordinance of the city to be applied retroactively back to January 11, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Archer. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. In my, in the rereading, the amendment to strike the retroactivity got lost. I'd like to just...
The amendment is to, the amendment to remove the retroactivity is included. Yeah. So even though it's still presented in the main motion, it has been amended to be removed.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
Councilor Gunn, Councilor Purdy?
No.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
No.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Five-one. Okay, now, moving on to number D, letter D, first reading, proposed 168, proposed charter 168. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The city planning board recently conditionally approved a medical marijuana registered dispensary. The city's prior life safety ordinance, Chapter 165, which regulated marijuana use, uses, expired by its own terms. The circumstances leave the city without adequate life safety regulations governing certain marijuana uses, including registered dispensaries. The city is contemplating passage of an emergency ordinance regulating marijuana uses, but any emergency ordinance will only be run for 61 days. Therefore, the city needs to start the review process and possible enactment of permanent regulations to replace prior Chapter 165 that will regulate marijuana for public protection and safety. Staff have drafted a proposed final version of a comprehensive regulatory program for marijuana use. Staff recommends Chapter 168 be set for review and comment at public hearing. I move to set a public hearing date for the proposed Chapter 168 ordinance of the city code.
City Minister, can I ask, do we have a date for the?
Yeah, I would suggest we need two weeks, so I believe the 22nd. Perhaps we should do it the first meeting.
November 22nd?
Well, I think with time to advertise, maybe the calendar. I think it should be the first meeting in December, I should, December 6th, to get proper notice.
Councilor Gunn, would you like to add that to your motion?
Certainly. Was it the city administrator's recommendation, December 6? December 6, that is.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Archer. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Is there no way it could be sooner?
I'm sorry?
Is it, is it, there no way it can be sooner? I mean, we have a... I mean, we have a meeting November 22nd, right?
Yeah, I believe the time to advertise is 14 days, so it would be impossible to get that out with 14 days' notice at this point.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, not seeing any discussion, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. That is set for a public hearing, December 6th. Okay, next we have letter E, final reading, amendment to zoning uses and definition, Counselor Hatch.
Since Saco's new zoning ordinance was adopted earlier this year, staff discovered that several land uses are defined when not shown in the permitted and conditional use table, which is Table 3-3, and several uses shown in Table 3-3 do not have definitions in the ordinance. After holding a public hearing on September 14th, 2021, the planning board voted to recommend adoption of changes to the uses and definitions sections of the ordinance proposed by staff. These changes include limiting registered medical marijuana dispensaries, which are currently allowed in the downtown and general business zoning districts via conditional use approval to only the industrial and business industrial zoning districts. Council recently enacted moratoriums on marijuana uses to afford it time to review and enact these zoning changes. Council has desired that these zoning changes be applied retroactively back to January 11th, 2021. At the public hearing on October 25th, Code Enforcement Director David Toomey spoke and pointed out that warehouse and distribution facility should be a permitted rather than conditional use in the industrial zone, and a conditional rather than permitted use in the business industrial zone. He stated that this was a typographical error that should be corrected as part of this amendment. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the zoning amendments as proposed with the addition of changing warehouse and distribution facility from a conditional use to a permitted use in I zones, and from a permitted use to a conditional use in B1 zones. All said, zoning amendments to be applied retroactively back to January 11th, 2021. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gunn? Any discussion? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Purdy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. While I agree with the majority of these changes, I am once again deeply concerned about the retroactive nature, although, as I've stated before, I'm not sure that Main Street is the proper location for a medical marijuana dispensary. The applicants applied, based on the current rules, as described in the background, have gone through the planning board and cite plan approval. To wish we could go back in time to change that, I think is disingenuous and sends, that's a dangerous precedent. That I don't like the way the zoning ordinance was written doesn't mean it was written differently. Therefore, I move to amend this motion to strike the retroactivity.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Berman to remove the retroactivity from January 11th, 2021, seconded by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, again, I agree with Counselor Berman. I think from the very beginning, I was one that was willing to, you know, put myself out there and say that I agree with many in this community that this probably isn't appropriate in our Main Street. But, as I also just stated, I feel like, not just myself, but the City of Saco's been caught with our pants down, and, you know, they're, this particular applicant, along with their legal team, has certainly figured out how to get what they want, and I, I don't think it's appropriate for us, regardless of whether we can do retroactivity, I don't think it's appropriate for us to take that action. I find it to be unfair, and I know, as a businessperson myself, you know, you, you look for a level playing field, that's all you can really ask for, and in this particular case, I felt there was a, what was available was available, and now it seems like we're gonna twist ourselves into a pretzel to get what somebody wants. I don't know who, ultimately, you know, I, I can't support that. Thank you.
Counselor Purdy?
Just, just, I just wanted to agree with Counselor Berman and Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment to strike the retroactivity. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. Back to the main motion. Any additional discussion? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment in the BI section to add contractor or tradesperson, food and drink, and personal services, and before I do this, this is being presented by city staff to the planning board tomorrow. This is a way just to clean up the process in a more efficient manner. Let me read to you what the, Molly Kircher, our assistant city planner, has, has created document, there'll be zoning text petition, business or industrial district, permitted or in conditional use, and in here, the contractor or tradesperson for this area, she writes, for these reasons, recommended that the contractor or tradesperson should be allowed as a permitted or conditional. She has also wrote, food and drink may be appropriate conditional use, so I would amend that to be conditional, and lastly, personal services may be an appropriate conditional use. I want to specifically talk about where this location is, is if you look at Industrial Park Road, the one that's closest to 112, you have a real estate agency, you have a storage facility, you have the industrial, that large industrial building, then you have the old Spectrum Commercial Building, then you have storage, and then you have, is that the water pump? Then on the other side of the road is you've got a couple houses, Merrimont Little League Field, you've got the health services, health services, a brand-new PNC, it's PNC, correct, PNC, and a bank. So, when we talk about zoning, it's like, when I borrow all these up and I started looking at it, I'm like, it's really no different, it's kind of a mishmash of properties anyway. So I'd like to make these, again, staff had made some recommendations as well, that it be, contractor be permitted, food and drink be conditional, and personal services be conditional for the BI district. And, I don't mind sharing this, if you guys want to see it.
Okay, could you just repeat what your amendment again, adding?
Yes, adding into the BI, Table 3-3, contractor, tradesperson, as a permitted, a food and drink as conditional, and a personal services as conditional.
Okay, so adding personal services, food and drink to the BI?
Yeah, with the contractor.
I'm sorry, with?
With the contractor and tradesperson as well. Of transfer.
Okay. Okay, is there a second? Counselor Johnson?
No, no. I just, I have a comment about the amendment, but I'll wait.
I'll second.
Okay, Counselor Purdy, second. Discussion, Counselor Johnson?
I'm aware that that's before the planning board, but would we not be circumventing the actual process that's laid out, where it goes to the planning board, they give a recommendation, and it comes back to council? You're basically making an amendment, added in with a bunch of other amendments, it hasn't had a public hearing. We've addressed this time and time again, most recently during the last rezoning process, and while I, I can agree that maybe on the surface you can say, oh, there's similar uses, they're really not, particularly the use, and I mean traffic volume on the Industrial Park Road, and what a food service does versus a bank, for example. But, that's something that we can address in the future when it goes through the planning board process.
All right, so with the amendment on the floor, still need to finish the process, we have a second by Counselor Purdy. Any additional discussion?
I, I would just ask to have, whether it's Mr. Murphy or the city planner, address what I just stated as far as having to go through the planning process, come up to council. It's my understanding.
But we do need to finish the amendment process first, because there is an amendment on the floor?
So, I.
Good.
Yeah, I'm just.
I think I understand Counselor Johnson's point, which is that traditionally, zone changes go to the planning board first for their review and commentary, and then the proposed changes come to you. However, the zone changes are now before you, you are the ultimate legislative body, so, regretfully, Counselor, it's, it's fair game now at this point. Any of you can offer proposed changes that relate to this matter, so, the door becomes wide open, you know, so.
Perhaps, I think it's a bit disingenuous to the public to do this that way, and that might be your legal opinion, but it, it definitely could be challenged if you don't.
I understand.
We address the public, and you know, this is particularly important to me, because this is a whole part of the process. You put this before the public, they had a date and set, and time for a public hearing, yes, we could, you know, after that subsequently make amendments, but this is literally, we've got no discussion of this ever, we're just gonna throw this there, and we've gone through this.
No, I understand.
It's been addressed through comp plans and everything else, so I just go through the process.
I, I'm not arguing the wisdom of your point in terms of how we make policy here in the city, I fully understand that, but the, the legislation is now open, it's before you, you're the legislative body, you're in charge of drafting the rules and ordinances that govern the city. So, the matter is open right now. The amendment's in order, whether you choose to act on it tonight is, is up to the wisdom of the body, and, and that's where your policy.
To your opinion, that I can amend anything in this zoning ordinance right now?
I think the door's open to do that. Is it a wise?
Okay, let's have fun with this, then, because I have, I have others.
Again, this gets to whether that's a wise thing to do.
I've tried to follow process, for eight years I've sat on this council, and I've always tried to follow process. And here we are, and it's your opinion, then I can do what I want, so, maybe we just can table this and give me some moments to put myself together, so I can have some amendments at the entire zoning ordinance. Not that we didn't just spend two years and $100,000 plus on this process. Why do anything?
Director Gunn, do you have any input on that, as planning director?
I believe the city solicitor is at least partly right, but I will state there is a process for evaluating petitions for amending the zoning ordinance, and it is in your zoning ordinance. I'll read it for you. Says, "The city council shall refer all proposed amendments to the board for a report thereon. The board shall hold a public hearing for consideration of the proposed amendment at least 10 days before the report is submitted to the city council." It does also say that on petition or recommendation of the planning board, or on its own motion, the city council may amend, supplement, or repeal the regulations and provisions of this chapter. With this specific motion, this, it does relate to a petition that our office received through the process that's described in the ordinance, and as mentioned, it is being heard at a public hearing by the planning board tomorrow evening. And has been evaluated very thoroughly by city staff with some detailed recommendations that you can review in the board packet, should you choose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gunn?
In the spirit of Counselor Johnson's objections, because I have those same feelings as related to the emergency Chapter 168, which I obviously could not speak specifically on because I acted as the, as the resource of, though the idea that we are acting on policy before the planning board has their final say, and that's certainly the process, whether it's, whether we have the legal, well, we do have the legal ability as the final legal authority in the city, as opposed to enact our own policy, it goes against sort of the longstanding tradition to do such things, and needless to say, in, well, the two different enchiladas in those situations, as it relates to zoning uses and definitions, I think it's best probably to have the planning board, since it's on their docket, like you said, city planner, and they're going to, you know, actually talk about it and hopefully make a decision on it this week, it's not like we're standing at attention for it, I think it would be appropriate, in light of Counselor Archer's amendment, to table the, the whole thing until the next meeting, because by that time, the planning board will have spoken on it, and it'll be appropriate for us to make a decision as a council, one way or the other. That's how the process should be. Planning board sends us their recommendation, and we act on it, because otherwise, the one body can accuse the other body of being in bad faith. And I think we have good relations between the bodies, and especially with this marijuana issue and other things, the last thing we want to do is make it seem like one body's acting out of turn. So, regardless of anyone's personal schedule when it comes to any of these issues, I think it's more appropriate to get it right. So I am putting a motion on the floor to table this until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we do have the original amendment. Counselor Archer, did you want to withdraw?
I can't believe I'm voting no.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table, second, Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, that now brings us to item F, final reading, zoning ordinance amendment, industrial zone use. Counselor Hatch?
On April 12th, 2021, the city council adopted a new zoning ordinance. In this updated ordinance, three industrial zones, the I-1, I-2, and I-3 districts, were combined into a single district called the I District. While this change simplifies the ordinance, several uses that were previously allowed in the business and industrial parks were not included in the new ordinance and are therefore no longer allowed. In order to allow for more flexibility within the industrial district and to increase alignment with the current and intended uses in this area, staff is requesting the council consider adding eight uses to the industrial district. Please refer to the attached copy in your packet of Table 3-3 for the specific changes requested for consideration. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposed amendments during its June 29, 2021 meeting. After the public hearing, the board voted to recommend approval of the amendment with the addition of schools-dash-private, uh, sorry, public and private as permitted use in the B1 and I districts. The change was in response to staff's request to allow schools in this area to be consistent with the business park covenants amendments, allowing schools as an emergency use. There was also public comment to the board requesting that private schools remain in allowed use. The board voted unanimously to forward a positive recommendation for the amendment as proposed. At the public hearing on October 25th, Code Enforcement Director David Toomey spoke and pointed out that warehouse and distribution facility should be permitted rather than conditional use in the industrial zone, and a conditional rather than permitted use in the business industrial zone. He stated that this was a typographical error that should be corrected as part of this amendment. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the zoning amendments as proposed with the addition of changing warehouse and distribution facility from a conditional use to a permitted use in the I zones, and from a permitted use to a conditional use in the B1 zones.
Okay. Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. My last amendment of the night, I promise. I'm concerned that the changes to permit schools into the industrial zone were made in response to the emergency ordinance situation that has not arisen. I believe schools are inappropriate in industrial zones, whether public or private. And although the zone rules don't allow schools to be present there, that creates an inconsistency with the zoning and the rules of those industrial parks. I'd prefer them to be consistent, and therefore, I move to amend the proposal for the zoning amendment to make schools public and private not permitted in the industrial district and the business industrial district. Thank you.
Second.
Amendment has been made, seconded by, amendment has been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any discussion or raised hands. Roll call vote on the amendment. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 5-1 for the amendment. Back to the main motion. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Sorry, you went a little fast. I'm just still a little confused. I guess it's a question of clarity. By passing this as presented, are we not adding back registered dispensaries in the downtown and the general business? That's how it appears. The previous, so if we go back to the previous item that we tabled, the intent was to remove that use, and what's presented to us keeps it in place. I guess that's how it is, isn't it? All right, thank you. Yes.
Director Garnum has, is he still here?
It's all, I'm all set. I think, I think that I unconfused myself.
Okay.
It presently already is there, and we didn't, so we're good. Thank you.
Okay. So is that a yes vote? All right. Thank you. Okay, so, main motion passes 6-0. Okay, and that concludes the action items tonight. Onto item number 10, we have a new business, yep, presentation by Director Salas on the senior tax assistant presentation.
I am just going to get myself connected here. Okay, we're live.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a revisitation of the senior tax assistance program. I came before council a couple of weeks ago, presented an overview of our goals with rewriting chapter 175, received some direction from council at that time, and have gone back and prepared a preliminary ordinance, which is the second part of the new business item in your packet, as well as a brief presentation to summarize some of the key points. So at our last meeting, council reviewed three options for senior tax assistance and elected a 100% match to the property tax fairness credit program, an estimated cost of $149,495 per year. The ordinance, which is again the second part of this item in your packet, establishes some definitions, the application process. It also specifies qualifications for the program, so age 65 or older, 10 years with a homestead in the city of Saco. The rebate is available to both renters and owners in compliance with state ordinance for municipal tax assistance program. However, if the applicant is a property owner, they are required to be receiving the homestead exemption and have their property taxes paid in full. We set the complete application deadline to November 1st to ensure any applicants that elect to extend their, their tax filing to October have some time to get confirmation on their property tax fairness credit amount, and then be able to turn that around to receive the match from the city. And the current ordinance, as presented, council sets the rebate amount as the lesser of the property tax fairness credit amount or a pro rata share of annual council appropriation. Finally, it establishes that the benefit cannot exceed property taxes paid or the portion of rent considered property taxes, which is currently 15% per the state of Maine in their property tax fairness credit formula. So I do want to highlight some points to consider. Of course, the entire ordinance as drafted is up for consideration from council if there are amendments they would like to make. There is a point to consider is the minimum age for the 65 or 70. The previous property tax fairness credit match program had a minimum age of 70. However, the tax workoff program, which we're looking to sunset with this ordinance revision, had a minimum age of 65. So if we want to ensure that those who are between the ages of 65 and 70 can in fact continue to receive some property tax assistance from the municipality, we would want to keep that age at 65 in the, in the ordinance. Another point to consider is, does the council want to lock this ordinance at a 100% PTFC match? Or do we want to allow the benefit to change if council changes the annual appropriation? So the current language does say the lesser of property tax fairness credit or a pro rata share of council appropriation. So we're basically building in some flexibility to future councils if they want to appropriate a smaller amount because of budget considerations, that would give them the flexibility, or we can remove that flexibility in the ordinance. Something else for council to consider, there is a lot of talk right now about the state's program to enact to help seniors and certain persons with disabilities remain in their homes by providing for deferral property taxes. So that goes into effect for fiscal year 2023. So does council want this ordinance in year one to be more than 100% matched to the property tax fairness credit as sort of a bridge to inaction of LD 1638? That's something that we can build into the ordinance, but it's not something that's currently built in. And then, of course, a conversation with communications. The finance department would be working closely with communications to ensure that qualified individuals in our community are aware of this program, as well as working with our general assistance director, who is on the front lines with those members of our community who are most in need. So I do want to pause here and hear from the council how you, how you might want to amend the current draft ordinance that's before you.
Any comments or questions for Director Salas? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just confused about bullet point three. Can you, can you explain that a little bit further and what the bridge program would accomplish and why it's necessary?
So there was a concern about residents of our community who have a real intense need that might qualify for LD 1638, but who won't have access to that state assistance in this year to be able to provide them with more this year, since we know they're going to be receiving this benefit potentially from the state next year, and we just want to sort of build a bridge to implementation of LD 1638. There's also the consideration that not all applicants to the senior volunteer program last year were able to receive the benefit. So again, we're just building out a higher benefit in year one of the program, and then...
That would then sunset after the first year?
Yeah.
Pending the implementation of the LD 1638?
Yeah, so we would have to build in sort of a year one amount and then thereafter.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. Glennis, just a quick question. Is there anything, reasons specifically why we're kind of going with either a 65 or 70 as sort of a, kind of our choices just going into this? I mean, it's just based on demographics, or is it the finances? What's, what's the rationale behind that?
So it's really just sort of having the conversation about the minimum age for the program, broaching that to council in case there was a consideration. There would be a lower cost of the program if the minimum age were set higher. That really is, is the key thing, but then if we keep it at 65, we're ensuring that previous qualified applicants to the senior volunteer workoff program would continue to receive a benefit. So it was a question that was raised about what the minimum age would be, and I wanted to highlight it to council in case you wanted to raise it to 70. Currently, the draft ordinance has 65.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch?
Yes. Glennis, I'd like to just go on record in terms of advocating the retention of age 65 in that discussion. I think it would be unfair to those residents who were previously eligible for the program to not be eligible moving forward. So although I appreciate the possibilities of lesser funding, I don't think that would be fair to the, to our constituents who are in need of help. And I would be also advocating in favor of the, of a bridge program to, to help those folks who, I mean, we, my understanding is, we had several, as you mentioned, we had several individuals who were accepted into the tax workoff program that just didn't, we didn't have work for them. Some of them worked, but they didn't work enough to get the full benefit, and I don't think it's fair to them to be deprived of that, that funding, so that would help get them to the next, next layer. And can you, can we talk a little bit about how this is actually paid out?
Certainly. So the approach would be to have applicants apply, as I said, November 1st. And when we say if they're a property owner, their taxes would have to be fully paid, that would basically be the prior fiscal year, because you have the year one amount due and the year two amount, or sorry, first half and second half due, so we would look to make sure that they had paid in full the previous year's taxes. And then we would issue a rebate. Essentially, it would be similar to if you purchase an appliance and receive a rebate from the state of Maine for your purchase, you sort of pay upfront and then receive the payment after. We would remit payment through accounts payable as a check to the successful applicant.
Okay, then I'm going to express some discomfort in that arrangement. You know, I think we're, in all fairness, we're dealing with folks who are likely struggling to pay bills and, and have cash available, and to pay first and get rebated later seems to be counterintuitive to me anyway in this type of program. So I would personally ask that we consider a credit as opposed to a rebate. Thank you.
So in that case, potentially taking into consideration that taxes have been paid in full through the first half of the current fiscal year and remit payment then, and then remit, I believe it would be a write-off on the second half. One item to consider is that we could only credit up to the second half, so if they were potentially to receive in rebate more than their total taxes, we would still need to be cutting a check. So, I mean...
That would be the exception and not the rule, I'm thinking.
It's, it's hard to say definitively before having seen what the applicants are. I mean, I do think it's a little bit cleaner to issue payment because they are receiving the payment prior to the second half coming due, so it's not different than writing off the tax balance, essentially. We are, we are leaving it up to the recipients to choose where and how they reserve the funding that we remit. As of the 31st of December, I do think that would be the cleaner approach as, as opposed to sort of a blending of write-offs and cutting checks.
All right. Well, I would just ask that we keep that into, in consideration, the credit, and we can vet out the details, I think, at some point.
Any additional questions or comments? Counselor Berman?
Thank you. Just when we go back through that, can you remind us of when taxes are due relative to when these payouts occur, so we can have that fresh in our minds? And then also, if we could, is there a way to distinguish between the first year of the program and later years? So for example, in later years, could they apply in November to be, to be applied to the next year's taxes to avoid this problem of, of having it occur kind of mid-cycle in, in the tax cycle? I just don't have it in my head the way you do.
Yes, so the first half, just for general council information, the first half of taxes are due the second Friday of September, and the second half are due the second Friday of November. The timeline of this program would be applications in full due November 1st for a payment no later than December 31st. So it would be occurring almost exactly between the first half and the second half. We don't have an ability to apply a credit on future tax bills. So where there's no amount due to the city and where we have not accepted, obviously, you know, we, we can hold prepayments, but what we would be talking about, the credit would really be a write-off. We would be writing off the taxes due in our system. So the challenge there, the challenge there is administrative. So we were hoping to sort of minimize the administrative load of the program, which is why we, we would prefer to issue the credit as checks paid to recipients rather than credits. If there's excess, we simply don't have an ability to apply, to hold a future credit on the books in our financial system. And so in that case, we would, I would prefer to cut a check because it's a difficult thing to track financially... thing to track financially in terms of our accounting and how we report our financials at the close of the year. So that would be my recommendation from a financial perspective, is simply to issue back that payment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any additional questions?
Our other counselors, I know Counsel Hatch has expressed a desire to see this as a credit on tax bill rather than a payment issued to the applicants. Are there any other counselors that feel about that particular point in support of Counsel Hatch's position? I'm seeing Counsel Berman nodding his head. Other counselors?
With that additional question, I really don't have a preference. It's really about how do we get the resource to those in need? But could we have any, what is it, GAAPSA issues? Audit issues when you have monies and all this stuff? Would one process make it more risky in that government accountability standard than another route? Do they have a preferred way of handling this?
I could certainly seek an opinion from our auditors about the best way to handle it.
Because if it's...
If they have a...
I don't care.
Yeah. Okay.
If it's a high risk, then yeah, obviously, we should be looking at that. And I do believe in, while I still have it, I do believe in 65. If you use 65 as the, again, it's income-based, first of all, but 65 as well, because 65 is that same timeframe where people are starting to collect Social Security. If they didn't do it at 62, it's technically 66 and a third now, two-thirds. It'll be 97 when I can collect it, but that's a different story. So I'm actually more, because it's income-based and you're in that transition of life stage to where you can start collecting Social Security benefits for retirement reasons, 65, I think is a better option.
Counsel Hatch?
I just want to follow up, comment on the payment mechanism. I think, I would like us to think about not letting systemic issues get in the way of helping residents who need help. Now, these are likely folks on fixed incomes. Those of us who run households know how cash flow works. And to have to put those individuals in a position where they need to pay their taxes in order to get money back is probably a pretty difficult situation that probably most of us don't appreciate. So I would really, really like to figure out systemically how we can handle a credit versus a rebate.
So in other words, to carry the credit from the end of one fiscal year into the other, to reduce and apply it?
Whatever it takes. Whatever it takes. And we're not talking about hundreds of people, I don't think. So I just throw that out there. Now, if there are like really, really legitimate reasons why that can't happen, I'm reasonable, I'd like to hear them. But if I can't come up with a real hard answer to not doing it the way I just described, I personally am going to have some issues with that. Thank you.
So do you want to retain the requirement that they have their taxes paid in full to qualify for the program? If they're a property owner?
I'm not sure. Can you clarify that for me? So their prior tax bill paid?
Certainly. So currently, in the draft legislation, we do require that homeowners have their taxes paid in full. And we could determine whether that would be the first half or the second half of the prior year. But they would be required to have their property taxes paid in full prior to be a successful applicant. So in other words, avoiding paying this rebate to those who may be under lien. Do we want to remove that requirement?
Counsel Berman?
Yeah, so the issue, I think, that Counsel Hatch might be thinking about, and that concerns me, is the necessity of someone to budget the money each month to pay taxes may be burdensome on them during the course. So the sooner in the process they can know that their overall tax burden is going to be reduced, the easier it is for them to adjust their monthly budgets and actually have that money to live on without creating that burden. So we would want them to not be behind on prior year taxes, but on the year in question, I think the point we're trying to save them from is to have to budget monthly in order to pay those taxes. So maybe if we could move the deadline earlier, so they would know before the current tax bills are issued? Or if we could have them, you know, apply now for a future year, so they know a full year in advance, whether they'll get the tax reduction for the next year? Or some way that people could know well enough in advance that they could budget in their monthly budget to know what their new tax burden is going to be, as opposed to getting it in the form of a rebate when they've already had then their monthly spending capacity impacted, is the way I'm thinking about it.
Yes. So understanding the timing of the state of Maine's process, you do file the due date for tax filing, which is when the property fairness tax credit is confirmed. So your filing deadline is April 1st. And then the state of Maine processes those over the course of, depending on the application and the year, typically, you know, likely within 60 days, although, of course, in this year, I know at least at the federal level, the process was delayed significantly. So in a more normal year, perhaps we could anticipate that by June or July, those who filed by April 1st at least, there might be confirmation available from the state. So we would remove from the process those who may choose a filing extension, which allows us to accelerate when we can approve, when we can confirm an amount. In order for this rebate to be calculated and applied to the fiscal year taxes, we would probably need successful applications, or complete applications, rather, by July Because we would, because we typically issue the tax bills early in August. And so potentially, along with the tax bill, would be a notation of the credit amount applied. And then we could apply the credit in full against the tax bill. Typically, what happens with credits is they are applied upfront. So if a successful applicant were receiving, let's say, 25% or 30%, that would be applied to the first half tax bill, but the second half tax bill would be due in full. But that would allow us to also maintain the requirement that the second half tax bill from the previous fiscal year had been paid in full and give us that flexibility. So...
I think that scenario is fair.
Okay.
Any additional questions or concerns or ideas for Director Salas?
So I did want to follow up on whether the council did want to maintain the flexibility of a prorata share of annual appropriation in the ordinance or fix the ordinance to 100% matched to the PTFC. Any?
Counsel Johnson, did you have your hand raised?
Oh, I was just going to ask, what do you suggest from a staff standpoint?
Yeah, as Finance Director, I always recommend maximizing council's flexibility when it comes to the annual appropriation, simply because we don't know from year to year what the financial circumstances of the city may be.
Thank you. I agree with that. Thank you.
And Counsel Hatch?
Yeah, I'd weigh in in agreement as well, prorata of the budgeted amount.
Does the council have a certain amount that you would prefer for the year one bridge program? It could be double, it could be 50% higher, it could be, it could be three times. I mean, I would think probably, you know, up to twice the PTFC, so that you got your tax fairness credit and then that, you know, twice, up to three times. I mean, that should give a lot of people, a lot of applicants, some breathing room for that year, for this coming year. The year one bridge program would also have different deadlines, because of course, we are already midway through fiscal year 2022. We would look to have the credit applied and payments sent by the second half. That would be our target for year one implementation.
Any additional, not seeing any additional questions or concerns? Anything else to add, Director Salas?
I did, while I have the opportunity to speak to both the council members and the public, I did want to remind those in our community of some other options for property tax assistance. The Finance Department does offer the Easy Pay Plan. So rather than having to plan for two large tax payments in September and March, you can apply to pay your property taxes in eight monthly installments. Unfortunately, the deadline for that program is the 1st of September, so we are past it for this fiscal year. But for future fiscal years, if you are interested in this program, please reach out to the Finance Department, and we can make sure that you get an application. The city also does have a property tax abatement program under the state statute for such a program by municipalities. This does allow council the flexibility to abate taxes for those who are in critical financial need, and that is managed by the General Assistance Department. And finally, waiver of foreclosure for those who are at the foreclosure point with the city of Saco. We do work very hard, and our tax collector does a great job of working hard with those owners, to establish a payment plan to ensure that all taxes and fees are paid back to the city and to make sure that members of the public can stay in their homes. Lastly, I just wanted to cover relevant state statutes. Title 36, Chapter 907A is the legislation which covers a municipal property tax assistance program. So I've referenced that in this presentation. It also establishes the tax work off opt-in program, which the city had had previously. And then there is also Title 36, Chapter 908A, which is a municipal property tax deferral program for senior citizens. However, unlike the legislation that was just passed by the state, this one requires that municipalities carry the burden of deferred tax revenue rather than the state taking that on. And so the city has not in the past opted in for this program. We refer those in need to the poverty tax abatement process, and we will look to help our members of the public and those in need to participate in the state program once it comes online this spring.
Great. Thank you so much for that information, and thank you for all the work that's been put into compiling all of this information and putting this together for us. In addition to Director Salas's presentation, I am going to invite Jane Saunders, Director of Age Friendly, with a presentation as well. Yep. Thank you.
I'm here to, I thank you tonight for this opportunity to speak, and I'm here to support what Director Salas just said about the need to move, to revise Chapter 175. There is a man in the back that's helping me with slides. In June of this past year, I was invited by City Administrator Kane Rath to assist in looking at the development of an alternative senior property tax assistance program, and that was based on a number of issues. I was able to work with Tori Gorman and help with the first draft of this new program. Next slide, Andrew. He said he feels like the Wizard of Oz in the box. So this is a picture back from 2017, when Age Friendly Saco did a community survey, and this is a Word Cloud document, which summarized the open-ended verbatim comments. The number of times a word mentioned is it appears larger in print. So as you can see, the number one concern that we heard over and over was property taxes. Next. So tonight, I'm just going to briefly go over our tax work off program, give you more information about numbers, and then the new proposed property tax ordinance, and what the new state law that was championed by our own Senator Bailey will do to provide tax relief for our residents. Next one. And so the tax work off program, and hopefully this provides some additional information to some of the questions that were asked. So in summary, the Senior Property Tax Work Off Program, which was in place for a number of years, there was an application process that was based on income level, and applicants were required to volunteer 100 hours and receive $1,200 in tax relief. During 2020, 29 individuals applied and were accepted into the program. Now, as you know, we're in the midst of a pandemic. One of the primary volunteer opportunities for the tax work off recipients was the train station, which, as we know, was closed for a very extended period of time. So as a result, only 16 of the 29 residents were able to actually complete their required hours. Three were able to complete some and received a prorated benefit, while 10 were not able to find any volunteer opportunity and thus did not receive any benefit whatsoever. Next slide. So I am asking tonight, and this hopefully will be part of what Director Salas was talking about, is our council consideration to help provide those individuals that were actually accepted into the program but didn't receive any sort of property tax benefit as a result of not having opportunities available. So we know that $60,000 has been budgeted in the past for this program. That's $48,000 for the actual benefit that was given out, $12,000 for additional supplies, et cetera. So could consideration be made by the council to make whole the remaining residents that did not have the opportunity to complete their tax work off hours during the pandemic? By providing this relief, we would still be way below budgeted $60,000, because, again, we only had 29 positions out of 40 that we were budgeted for. Next slide. So just again, to review. So from the period of 2018 to 2019, that is the time period in which it was determined that volunteers needed to be onboarded as city employees. So over time, this created a huge administrative cost for the city. You had 40 volunteers that needed to be onboarded as employees. Because of this, additional work, there was an additional position that was added. So originally, when the tax work off program started, there was a small stipend for the coordinator, but it grew into a half-time position that the city still has actually on the rolls at this time. So the actual cost of running this program was beyond the $60,000. When you look at what the administrative costs were to onboard 40 volunteers, as well as the half-time position in order to run the program for those 40 volunteers. Next slide. So the beauty, and I'm going to add a few extra comments, the beauty of this new tax assistance program is that it simplifies the operational aspects of the program and lowers the administrative costs and the burden of running the program. I have worked with other communities in helping to set up the same type of program. The Town of Elliott was my most recent contact. And what is usually done is that, and again, to simplify the whole operational process, when they actually receive the tax fairness credit, they get a check, they bring that check to the municipality, the municipality documents the amount, and then that becomes the tax benefit for the upcoming tax bill. So you take a very, what was a complex process and make it very easy... So you take a very, what was a complex process and make it very easy, because you're no longer having to vet applicants. Applicants are vetted by the Main Revenue Service. So you, you have, the whole application process is moot, and so you can provide that benefit easily by, by putting the onus on the applicant to bring in the check and then to provide that tax benefit. I have spoken with Senator Bailey, and she also recommended that this be a program where, that a person is not given a check, but again, a rebate on their taxes, so people don't feel that they need to come up with the taxes. So again, this is in line with what most municipalities around the state are now doing for senior property tax relief. Next slide. So this is information that Tori was able to obtain from the Main Revenue Services Income Division. You will see that there were 799 residents in Saco that received the Main Property Tax Fairness Credit. Of those, 186 were over the age of 70, 72 were over the age of 65. In our own Tax Work Off group, two were over the age, were under the age of 70. So we only had two of the 29 that were between the ages of, of 65 and 70. So you can see the numbers there, that if you do a 100% match, if you do it just for 70 and over, it would cost $107,871, but the 65 to 70-year-olds would add an additional $41,624. I just wanted to share with you some of the municipalities that have this, oh, sorry, Andrew, next slide, have, some of the municipalities that have this program in place. And they have different, they have different formulas. Many of them use a 100% because it's the easiest thing to do. Others have what you're describing, you know, that there's a prorated amount based on what the, what the fund is that's budgeted each year. But this is not a complete list, these are just the folks that I know have been involved with this. Also to think about, next, also to think about is the new law, and this is the one that our Senator Bailey championed, LD 6038. So we know in July, Governor Mills signed this law into effect. It actually went into effect October 18th. In discussions with Senator Bailey, they will actually be coming out with all the documents of how to sign up in April of 2022. So there's going to be a one-year gap between this new program and when, when people can apply for this new property tax deferral bill. There in no way is the expectation that this new property tax deferral bill should in any way eliminate municipal property tax programs. There are different income eligibility guidelines, both are needed, but we can expect to see a drop in the number of, of people in the, in the municipal program when they choose to go into the LD 6038 program. So that will be this next year. Next slide. So the takeaways in all of this is that most municipalities, as I've already said, have moved to the property tax match in order to simplify the process of administering this. Thousands of seniors across the state that rely only on social security will qualify for this new tax deferral program, again, which will have an impact on our own municipality. I think the biggest thing in this is that third bullet. We need to do a better job in making people aware of these programs. We need to do a lot of education. The gateway for people to be part of this program, should it pass, as well as the Main Property Tax Fairness Credit, the gateway is the Main Property Tax Fairness Credit, but how many people are actually not aware of that, and also the homestead exemption? So the onus is really on us to try and make people aware of these wonderful tax benefits that are available to them in the future. And so if we really look at what the administrative costs have been, there was analysis done in 2019, and we look at the $60,000 budgeted, and we look at the halftime position, we're not talking a whole lot of difference in terms of enacting this new 100% tax match program. And in, in summary, the Tax Work Off Program is no longer viable. The pandemic showed us that, but also the administrative burden of onboarding 40 volunteers. And we just saw the numbers. We're helping 40 residents versus potentially helping 250 with this new program. We also, most municipalities have moved to this, and, and more residents are likely to qualify and benefit from this new approach. We already know there are 186 that would qualify over the age of 70, an additional 46 from the age of 75, 65 to 70. So I guess that I would ask you all to think about that, if we consider the 100% tax match for 65 and up, that number may go down once this new law goes into place for the tax deferral. So again, I'll just in summary, ask for consideration for our Tax Work Off people that had no opportunity to receive that, that tax benefit, and also to consider the 100% tax match.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Jane. I also want to thank not only you, but your volunteers and your program for all the work that you guys do for our residents.
These are, these are a lot of the Tax Work Off volunteers that have done tremendous work for the city.
Exactly, yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments for Jane? Oh, Council Berman?
Well, thank you, that was great work, I appreciate it. And maybe one of the messages that came through your presentation really loud is that communication is going to be key, and I wonder if the city could consider a mailer, or an insert, or a brochure with the tax bill, letting people know of the opportunities available.
Yeah, we've actually already discussed that in some meetings, and we plan to do some increased efforts with the communication in all forums, and we're going to work with our Communications Department on Age Friendly to accomplish that.
We, I had actually shown that another municipality that I worked with had all of the tax benefits on a little postcard that went in with the tax bill, and I thought that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are at item number 11, Administrative Update.
Okay, thank you. A election 2021 wrap-up, some numbers for you. Absentee ballots issued 2001, absentee ballots returned and accepted was 1884, so total voters participating in the election this year was 5,549. That's of 17,005 registered voters, for overall turnout of 32.64, and we did clear the threshold for our charter amendments, which is good news. A ComPlan Open House, there will be a public open house event to present and discuss our comprehensive plan update. The event will begin at 6:15 and run until 8:00 PM on November 17th here at City Hall. There'll be a presentation beginning at 6:30, and the staff team will be available to take questions and feedback from the public after that presentation. Of course, all members and citizens of Saco are welcome and encouraged to attend, and meeting materials will also be posted online for review and comment following the meeting for those that cannot attend at sacomaine.org/complan. We do have another Seniors Thanksgiving Luncheon Plan this year. Saco Parks and Recs organizing a Thanksgiving Meal Lunch for seniors that will be served to-go at the community center, or home delivery can also be arranged, this is similar to our meal program that ran throughout the pandemic. Meals will be free for those who sign up, and provided by the Golden Rooster this year. To sign up, please email Amelia Meyer at ameyer@saco maine.org, or you can call her also at 207-283-3139, extension 807. Meals will be served on November 18th from 11:00 to 12:30 PM at the community center, and is open to all residents ages 50 and over. Some city RFPs for city property, we have the Claire Parcels, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but you see it here in my report, it's also going to be put out tomorrow. So we have the Claire Parcels, and also the Phillips Spring Road Parcels that the council approved, and these of course will be coming back to the council for full consideration of those RFPs. We also have another bid solicitation opportunity from the Fire Department, which I will read to put into the record, the City of Saco is soliciting bids from qualified vendors for the conversion of a new supplied by the city 2022 Chevy Tahoe into an emergency response vehicle. Work will include, but not limited, the installation of emergency audible and visual warning devices, forward console, rear command cabinets, radios, antennas, exterior graphics and lettering, and other associated equipment in accordance with the attached specification. All bids must be submitted in the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked Bid Fire Command Vehicle Conversion. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 PM on December 1st at the Saco Public Works Department, 15 Phillips Spring Road, Saco Maine. There will be a public opening of all bids received at that time. Any questions can be directed to Deputy Fire Chief Robert Martin by email at rmartin@saco maine.org, or by calling the fire station 207-282-3244. So I'll have, thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Kane Rath. That leads us to item 12, Council Discussion and Comment. Any councilors? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. It's actually a comment for the, the City Administrator's Update. Just, again, going to go back to process, and several months ago, when we voted on those, the sale of those properties, it made it clear during council comment discussion that we never voted for the RFP for Phillips Springs. I brought it up at least twice subsequently. Here we are, it looks like city staff is issuing an RFP. Again, you're not following code, and at least myself is one-seventh of council, I take exception to that. Maybe it's one-seventh, but I have a role in this process, and once again, it's been ignored. Thank you.
Happy to discuss that further anytime after the meeting, or tomorrow if you'd like. I'm just happy to discuss that anytime, if you'd like to speak after the meeting or tomorrow, happy to hear those concerns out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, Council Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I wanted to take a moment and thank my fellow councilors, City Administrator Kane Rath, Mayor Doyle at Home, for your work and support for the charter amendments that passed last Tuesday. As many of you are aware, I, when I ran for office, I ran on a good government platform, so having this body have a thoughtful, constructive discussion on the merits and concerns of each one, pass, having them pass on to the voters, and then have them ratified by the citizens, means a lot to me. I'd like to convey my sincere thanks to each and every one of you for your part that you played in that, as well as to the citizens at home who voted to ratify them. Also be remiss if I did not thank the voters of Ward 3 for endorsing my reelection, as well as the re-elections of my colleagues, Councilor Archer and Councilor McPhail. Having the chance to serve you voters as your Ward 3 counselor and the city as a whole has been one of the great privileges of my life, and I want to sincerely thank you for the confidence that you have shown in me by your votes and the votes of my colleagues, and I look forward to continuing to serve you for the next three years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to just inform people that on this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Ramada Inn, 352 North Street, the Main Term Pike of 30 will be holding a public meeting to discuss Exit 35 and Exit 36, and to allow you some other updates on, on, on what's going on there. And on Thursday, which is Veterans Day, the City of Saco and Bedford will not be holding a parade this year, however, there is going to be a ceremony at 11 o'clock at Thornton Academy. And to go off that, I also want to thank my fellow counselor and brother, Purdy and Johnson, who are also fellow veterans, and thank you for your service and your continued what we call second service, when you serve in the military and then you serve in a government elected position, it's called a second service, so definitely want to say that. And also on the same day of the Main Term Pike of 30 is the Marine Corps Birthday, so hurrah, and I, we're old, 230-something years old, I think, I believe by at this point, 1775, so, yeah, 221 years old. I'm not looking bad for 221, I don't say, but, but yes, note, this is a week of recognizing various political, both for the elections and now Veterans Day coming up, and then multiple holidays.
And the ceremony is on the front lawn in front of the main building at the flagpole, correct?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Council Hatch?
Yes, I'd just like to publicly thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail, for stepping into the role this evening. You did a tremendous job, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, it was my pleasure. Okay, there is no executive session, so there is no report from the executive session, and with that is their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, motion by Councilor Berman, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.